Apparently curriculum or assessment writers. They are, however, experts in their content knowledge and are quickly using data to show the strengths in areas for growth with the students we serve. By providing schools with math and science tier one standard-based curriculum and the training necessary to learn the material, I can confidently say that our student achievement growth will continue and accelerate. Thank you very much.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, Andrea Womack for the record. I'm reminded of a similar conversation in this very room back in 2019. I presented the data of Brenly Middle School where I had recently been appointed as the new school leader. Brenly was one of eight schools represented in the conversation on the innovative middle school pilot program. The support of this program has given Brenly Middle School the opportunity to earn the pay-for-performance bonus for the second time. Within the innovative status, we were able to maintain staffing over the course of an unprecedented global pandemic, as well as return to our brick-and-mortar campus with our staff mostly intact. We were able to leverage our opportunity for recruitment and continue our conversations and practice on continuous improvement. We can attribute our success to designing a strong strategic plan that included a student success profile and clear outcomes for all students that attend Brenly Middle School. We aligned our vision to our district's efforts around Focus 2024 and put an intentional focus on three strategic priorities. One, we created and implemented a clear vision for school culture. Two, we created and implemented a clear vision for teaching and learning. Three, we created and implemented a strong professional development strategy. Within this vision, we were able to align the tier-one resources and supports provided by our district in reading, math, and science to help our staff stay focused on the business of teaching and learning in spite of some of the other challenges that many of us were living through during the COVID-19 pandemic. In that data profile, you can see the intentional focus play out as growth for students of all ethnicities. We celebrate this growth as proof that all students can achieve success with strong systems and structures in place that focus on kids at the center of the Y. We are excited to see these priorities play out as Brenly Middle School is now 11 points away from achieving three stars. It was my honor to serve this school community and to continue sharing these strategies with the principals in Region One in my new role. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, for the record, Dustin Mansell. We are proud of the work shared by our principal. Thank you. But we also understand there is still work to be done in the Clark County School. Our lessons learned include continued investment in our educators with professional learning built capacity, particularly around the multi-tiered system of supports, tier-one instruction, and professional learning community. Continued focus on high-quality, standards-based tier-one instruction, again, including professional learning and support with implementing tier-one curriculum resources. And as we understand, this is not unique to the Clark County School District, but a full recovery of our students' achievement is and will be a multi-year commitment, which is nationwide as well. Our next steps include implementing the Transformation Network, expanding school serp through the differentiated school support framework based on student outcome, monitoring tier-one X instructional expectations and student progress using math growth, engaging leaders and educators in professional learning to strengthen tier-one instruction, including professional learning communities and master scheduling, and maintaining summer programming opportunities for students to master skills and concepts along with retreat classes. Trustees, thank you again for this opportunity to share this update regarding student achievement. We will pause and take any questions the board may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Mansell. I just wanna, I just wanna share a couple of things if I may. I'm incredibly proud, not only of our faculty, but of our principals in sharing, because you have four great stories. And this is just a highlighting of mention, but I'm glad that press review. Hopefully, they pick up some of those great things that are happening in the Clark County School District, where Lily Whitney, Bob Ellis Elementary School, Face Face, Mr. West, and Brenly. All made incredible gains. They were strategically here for various reasons. I know that Whitney Elementary made some of the largest games in elementary, I think, like this, as the principal mentioned, 31 games. The science in the third grade and and the math and some of the work that's happening, we're really incredibly proud of all of them, but sorry, I kind of did shout Brenly because it had the largest. Again, what you heard across the board was mainly focusing on instruction, supporting educators, around curriculum implementation standards. One of the things that if I can take the liberty, I know that Mr. Manzi talked a little bit about the ACT scores that we just released yesterday. I, we worked on, if I may, we worked a little bit around our impact in our high schools. And I know that this board, I think it was two board meetings ago, invested, because we knew the data was coming. And we had seen it in our classroom, this board invested approximately $1 million to implement some ACT program on our high schools. So hopefully, this, the theme that you're seeing is now bound me, but then accelerate. Because this force commitment by improving curriculum that we're getting for a couple of dollars, the funding is really, you're gonna see a greater impact as we, we bound come out of this pandemic and have full confidence in our educators in our schools to be a leader for you and this community, especially our children.
And importantly, our children. Thank you, Dr. Jara. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm gonna stick around for a minute. I'm gonna open the floor to questions from members of the board who are present. We will go into the cloud. Trustees, are there any questions this time? Turn it over to Trustee Brooks.
Thank you, Vice President. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your work during these years. I know it's been a very challenging couple of years, and I appreciate you and I appreciate your dedication to our students. A couple highlights for me, I think that it's very important. You touched on some things that I think sometimes as a community we struggle with intentional focus over an extended period of time headed towards a goal, keeping your eye on that goal, and that is something that I think we all in the struggle with. We've struggled with that for a while. I appreciate you touching on the fact that context absolutely matters when you're looking at student data. And you can't just look at a single data point without looking at things like student demographics and how many students are taking the ACT. I think it's very important to have that data fluency so that you understand that not all of these mean the same thing. So I appreciate that. Seems to be that secondary students seem to be recovering not quite as quickly, but I think developmentally speaking, having a secondary student, I completely understand that. I appreciate every single principal touch on the fact that there's a culture of high expectation and a, an intentional focus on tier-one instruction. So this isn't about just a program and you investing in just a magic solution. It's really about intentionally focusing on instruction, and I think that that's something that we could all, we would all be better remembering. And my only question is, given all of this, how do the board could better support you or support the district to help you be even more sustainable? But feel free to be honest, too. No questions.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, Trustee Brooks. Can I ask that question for me, just to continue of support around those social-emotional learning supports in our school?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Trustee Brooks. I would just ask that the board continue to keep a nationwide lens on the shifts that we make in education and continue to lift up the voices of all students that we serve.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. This is my former government teacher coming out. We're coming into a legislative session and I just would ask that that this work, that ask money, that amazing investment once in a generation, investment in education that we're getting, that we're doing so many cool things with. But our state, I know you know this, is that, that investment in education and our educators and just our system that we have a, just a really good unified voice behind that and the good work we're doing in Clark County with our kids and our school.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Trustee Brooks, I will just add that we're all learners. We are just a continuous learners, and so just continuing our professional learning for both principals, teachers, all the way down is just going to be very important as we get through the pandemic.
Thank you. We're gonna move on. So thank you for your answers. I'm gonna move on to Trustee Four.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. My favorite meetings are when the principals come and talk to us face-to-face because I want to hear the unique things that you are all doing, and I know that we have so many great people, and I just, thank you for being here. I have some comments. I don't have any questions specifically for you guys, but what I'd like to do is kind of put it on the record again, I have some on the record a couple of times in a row. And now that I have you here, if you don't mind, if there's anything that comes to mind afterwards with your expertise, because I'm clearly not the expert. I got a lot of ideas. So if there's anything that I've been saying that you wanna piggyback on and let me hear it, or anything that's related to data, so just feel free to or don't, whatever. But I've said it in the last several years in a row during this annual FCA, clearly, I'm only one trustee. I can't direct how we do data. But I've kind of suggested that maybe we start looking at some data and some relationships between data to maybe give her us like a better, bigger picture. Some of those things that I'm always curious about is, first of all, what is the breakdown between schools and districts, trustee districts? Clearly, we have like top spot maps already, but he's changing this exactly. Where are the bright spots? Is it related to teacher and staff retention? Is it not? You know, these kind of things. What schools and areas have students that struggle the most? Is it consistently low-income areas? Is it consistently high turnover rate? Is it areas that, I don't know? What does that student population, you know, look like? Are CTAs? Are our CTAs performing much better than the rest of the schools or not? Is that because of the interest-based programs available there? Is the relationship between, you know, test scores and is there a relation between that and perhaps extra popular activities, specific ones, sports, electives? Is there, would we find that maybe all kids that are in music class do better in science? Like, I don't know. Is this something we should be looking at and how? I believe that that's the kind of data, high-level data, the board should be looking at and thinking through to tell a story, to keep in mind when we're making budget decisions, policy decisions, and specifically, what are the variables that are contributing to any student success that we're having and district-wide success? We've heard a lot from all of you about standardization, standardized test scores, standardized assessments, curriculum. I highly appreciate that. I've said earlier before, I went to eight CSD schools. I ended up dropping out junior year because I was always the new kid in the middle of the year. I either already learned the material or I was expected to know the material, you know? I really appreciate that we do have a standard curriculum and that all students could be able to pop into a school even from like, you know, differently town and be able to be on the same page. But when we're talking about results, if that was the only thing that mattered, if the standardized assessment curriculum was the only thing that mattered, we would have standardized results district-wide, and we don't. So what are the variables? What are the, what's the X factor? What principals have it? What does it take to get it that we can't teach from standardization or getting out of professional development? Those are kind of the things that I want to, I would love the board to start looking at, those like often overlooked soft skills, people's skills. That's pretty much it. I just wanted to put on the record again, and I'd really love just any ideas or thoughts that you guys had about my ramblings.
Let's see, Trustee Cabasos is on the queue, in the queue. There are questions specifically that you'd like to have addressed. There were a lot of questions in your, in your statements. Is there something specific? That is a lot of conjecture. Maybe there'll be a response afterwards. Thank you, Trustee Four. Thank you, Trustee Four. Sika Cabasos, I'm gonna turn on your mic.
Thank you, guys. It has been great to interact with you after. Thank you all of you for being here tonight after the presentation. I'll echo what Trustee Four had said, it's so nice to be able to talk to the principals. We try to fit in school business where we can, talk to you, but it's so wonderful. To have you here and actually, good to see you and talk to you. So kudos, I have to start with District G right here, I think, for in Whitney Elementary, and amazing achievement. Thank you so much for all your hard work on that. The next thing, not as serious, but I just have to ask Principal West, how do you say that name correctly? We all keep mispronouncing it.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, just said, it's just best, right? Confess. I wanna, I wanna put that in the, in the assistant's book.
Thank you so much. That helps a major, but that helps a lot. Now, I'm more seriously, I had to get that away. I noticed too that in all of our different categories are pretty, you know, we have pretty low numbers there on our English language learners. We are continuing to work on that, yeah. What are, if somebody wants to push something, there are continuing challenges that we're still seeing on that.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, Dustin Mansell for the record, Trustee Cabasos. Coming back from the pandemic, there are many challenges, right? Our students were receiving distance education, many of them for an entire year as their families chose not to return during our hybrid instruction time. So they were out from March of 2020 until the following year in August. So just continuing, our educators need to continue to look at our map group formative assessment to dig into their data to look for areas in which students are mastering and then areas where there are gaps within their achievement or proficiency. Being able to then really identify and provide high-quality tier-one instructions, scaffolds and differentiation to target that student. Our curricular resources that we've been able to purchase in both mathematics and science do have opportunities to scaffold instruction and for differentiation, particularly even looking at English language learners. Looking at our professional learning communities and having teachers collaborate and share best practices for delivery, what they found as successful ways for instruction to support those students, and again, continuing to work alongside our parents. Helping our parents understand where our students are performing and then ways that they can even support the child at home and even engage in a class from that school.
Thank you, Dr. Mansell. So it sounds like some of the same challenges that we've had before, we're kind of stepping up our efforts on that and we back in pandemic, trying to focus in on those specific aspects is what basically sounds like. Thank you so much for that. I had a brief question. For me, you saw on the slides, we encounter like non-possible data in some districts. Are we looking outside of some of those districts to try to see if there's other ones that, you know, instead of having, you know, different categories or different things where it is just as long possible there? One moment, Dr. Jara. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, for this presentation, the board has identified these districts. We always look at other districts that are going to pass the board, especially our council districts. But for this presentation, this is what the board has identified the five and six districts, so we compared it.
Thank you, Superintendent Jara. There was a question from one of the constituents trying to go. Thank you so much for clarifying that. The other ones are not really questions, just comments. I just wanna say that we're so pleased to hear, you know, as we, the strengthening as far as the tier-one supports and also to very, very encourage about the SEL and the different ways that that is being addressed. I really commend you for that. I'm a big proponent. Again, you know, we have the data, we have to look at the whole child, we have to look at what our kids have been through, what our educators have been through. I commend to all of you. I really appreciate you being here, and I believe it was, let's see, everybody's names straight here. Doctor Womack, am I getting that right? Okay, it was formally, perfectly. Not, not, I mean, oh, I can very believe that's all the designation. All right. But as far as having the perspective of having been the principal and then going into your new role, that is so helpful to be able to look at that and how you were helping the teachers. So I appreciate you all being here so much, and thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you, Sika Cabasos. I'm gonna move on to Trustee Williams, who's in the queue.
Madam Vice President, you're all doctors now. Um, thank you all for being here and for this comprehensive report. I always love when you guys come in and do these reports because I think it's helpful for the community to get a big whole picture on it. I've asked this question before, but I'm gonna ask it again just because I don't feel like telling constituents to go back and look at previous meetings. So, Dr. Mansell, when you gather this data from comparative districts, what are the, what are the tend to look at? As to why these were the districts that showed? So I, I know, again, I've asked this question before, but just so that constituents get over and over and over again.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, this district was selected from the range forward because when we've done council, if you recall, when you were here, when we came in and had the council update to the schools, which is the largest seven-seven urban super in urban districts in the country. They compared us to Houston, LA, Denver, San Diego due to our population size. So we were very comparable. The board also looked at, actually in Miami as well, us compared to the council district, but also identified actually San Diego and Washington. So, so Washington to get a state, a state comparability. But then the other districts are very similar in population size and challenges in our demographics.
Thank you. That was the, that was the answer I was looking for. I know that I'm not roundabout, like, where should we kind of round out and that was the one I was looking for. And then my other question is, we said on the challenges, the availability of tier-one instructional tools, English language, science, and social studies. How are you, I guess, that, those, those?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, for the record, Dustin Mansell, Trustee Williams. This year, we were able to roll up the science instructional materials. So there are still two gaps at this time. English Language Arts and Social Studies. The state had just adopted a Social Studies and World Language Curriculum. So at this time, our district is currently going through their review and selection process, and those will then be made available for schools to purchase. The State Department of Education for Nevada is currently under the review for the English Language Arts Curriculum. Once that occurs, hopefully by March, which arts curriculum, once that occurs, we have those materials available for our schools next year. In the meantime, we are band-aiding. We are waiting for the state to adopt that curriculum so we can continue to report and support our teachers with the instructional materials they need, rather than many teachers who are purchasing materials out of their own pocket.
Awesome. Thank you. That was, that was my answer, and you for putting finally on that.
Thank you, Trustee Williams. We're gonna move up to Trustee Sepetta. Do you have any questions at this time?
Hey, thank you. I have a couple of comments. First, thank you all for this presentation. Thank you for our principals who are here with us today to showcase and share out what is some of their successes at their, at the schools. Thank you for our staff and our superintendent for listening. We have asked for some principles, some direct communication with principals and they came through. I wanted to comment on a piece specific to the template and the data piece. We gone back in January, I would highly recommend if there are pieces that you wanna see incorporate, introduce some changes to bring, please keep those, keep those, file them away so that we, while when we revisit the template, we'll be able to look at those and see what we could do with, with any, with those recommendations. Again, those are all things we proved at the beginning of the year, and it's been unfair to staff if we were to change the templates in the middle of the year. So that piece, I definitely wanted to highlight. I guess, to piggyback on Trustee Brooks's question specific to support, I'm wondering, is there anything we, you as a trustee, to move along some of these curriculum pieces? Who is there, you know, who should we communicate with, or is this just kind of standard? I'm relying as we with this curriculum.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. Trustee, the timeline has changed. So prior to the year 2018, school districts charged their own review and selection process and adoption of curriculum. So when the state updated standards or adjusted or readapted standards, we in our curriculum and instruction division could jump right into that review and selection process to ensure instructional materials are available for our teachers. In 2018, the State Department of Education or the Nevada Department of Education had updated that process where now they do the first review, selection, and adoption. So we do have to wait for them to do so. Once they adopt curriculum, it may be one, two, three, or more. We can then do our own review and selection process, but we can only select from the items that the state approves. So at this time, we are waiting on the State Department of Education to do that process.
I, again, I feel the frustration in the sense of we try to control what we can and frequency is one of those pieces that's a little bit more achievable, low-hanging fruits. So thank you for that answer. I think for now, I'm okay. I definitely appreciate that, all the work that's gone into this presentation, again, it's since 2019. Not having the stuff we've done this year, but this is 2019, if we haven't talked about these items. So really important that we are starting to really see where we're at and where we need to go. So thank you all again so, so much.
Yes, Madam Vice President, members of the board, Trustee Sepetta, if I can expand on that, so it's been very kind. And I'm just going to ask you as electeds, as you are elected, because I know that if you can, I hope you can see because I see it, we see when we, and you heard from our principals, when our teachers have the resources, there's a lot of great things that our teachers need resources for they were to teach. I think the conversation with electeds would be with the state board because we are delayed with our ELA curriculum, and I know I'm having conversations with the state superintendent, all of us are. So I think that is where you as a board, having that the, the acceleration, so then our educators will have the resources so that we can rebound while we have the federal dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Womack. I'm gonna take a moment, I just bring out some next steps here. I'm gonna share my comments and open up to public comments and we just have yeah, I'd love to ensure that we hear from the public, and then we'll come back to trustees. Thank you for this incredible work that you and teams have worked on over the last year, years, even before this data actually came out. I know this is work in progress, and I'm incredibly grateful to to hear about it first.
To hear about it firsthand. Thanks for being here tonight. I really appreciate and the acknowledgement around. Um, you know, there's a lot of work still that needs to be done. When I, when I hear that and when I see that through other presentation and. Especially around. And, and our state um. Boards, average composite scores. I think about uh, student achievement really can't be, we really are uh. We really cannot look at academic achievement in the vacuum as a, as a board. And I'm, I'm sharing this just based off of my reflections and looking at all of this. So this, if we're really looking at, um, really want to see what we can do as a system, as a board. Uh, and to continue that is great work, we cannot look at this, this information in the vacuum. There are challenges with the curriculum and while we have uh, band-aids in place, we know that the. The system. Has a, there are tons of band-aids, not just when it comes to curriculum. Uh, but curriculum certainly is one. From what I remember, I recently asked for this information from our one, my one-on-one and it was um, shared to me in an email. And that the uh. CCSD conducted the last ELA instructional material adoption that was approved by NDE in 2016. Is that still after it? That's correct. So 2016 is forever ago. So much has changed and um, our students deserve to have updated curriculum. These delays, I'm sure are as a result of various um, shortages and staff. And the entire state uh, have a bounding around education. And I, that makes me think about, you know, per people funding. When I look at this ACT chart. You know, we may have the, the lowest scores and we also have the lowest per people investment in education. Uh, as a community, as a state, as a state. And uh, we have the highest, you know, the English language learner population. We have the highest, one of the uh, highest percentages in, or fewer reduced large population. So. If there's no denying that as a community, we have failed to invest in our education system. And I guess we, we, we invest in, uh, and we have to really come to terms with that and have to accept that for what it is, but we don't have to accept it moving forward. And we have um, the responsibility to bring these issues to light through our public comment here, through our comment on the dais. And we have responsibility. We all have children, grandchildren, uh, children's children will be attending the school district and it really is, um, it will. Uh, it's unfair to look at this information in the vacuum. The last piece that I just really want to reflect on is if I look on page two of the ACT. Um, context of the ACT press release document, I see that we have a composite score seventeen point three. Per, per NRS, the only requirement for ACT or for our students is that they participate. There is no cut score that exists. And we have an eighty-one percent graduation rate. I mean, what, what is this telling us? What is this telling us about our graduation rigor ultimately? And I, I think that's where I want to land in terms of my question, because when I look at. Okay, our students are not performing well in the ACT, but they are graduating. And there's, there's a story behind that and I am trying to make sense of it. Dr. Jarrah?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, uh, the great question and it is a conversation that we continue having, actually I've been having publicly in the last month or so with some of the outside groups. Um, there is limited, I can tell you that the rigor of the graduation expectation as a state. Um, needs to improve because as you're right, we're graduating at eighty-one percent. Um, but there's no performance metric for students to graduate. Um, just the credit required. Um, and I, when you look at compared to other states, there is a performance metrics. Um, and then you see outcomes that um. That children are performing to gain high school diploma. So then the question that becomes, what is the value of the high school diploma? Uh, which is something that we continue to grapple and that is something that we need to address. If you look at it, I know that Mr. Manzi can talk as he went into the picture. Share his comments at the State Board. Um, we currently don't have, I mean, we are going to continue on the ACT, but there is no way. Um, for us to measure what's going on in our high schools with ACT, ACT is a college placement assessment, but we can't be able to do all the great things that are happening right now. Up in our middle schools and elementary schools, because we have no data to be able to make the instructional shifts. We had no data uh, available with MACRO that this board has invested at the state. Um, so to your point, I know that's a long answer to your, to your, to your question. Um, that is something that the state needs to, to really look at is what is, what is the expectation for our high schools' kids, for our students when they graduate? What do they need to do to perform? Because um, there is no metric and there is no regular any graduation requirement here. Mr. Manzi, anything that you want, wanting to add?
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jarrah, just to um, add to what the superintendent was sharing. Really takes a comprehensive balanced assessment system a- approach also at our high school level. Um, ensuring that we have a formative assessment that gives us information on student progress. That we have a assessment aligned to our state standards that gives us information at a summative level as well, which the ACT currently does not. It's a college and career readiness assessment. Um, so really evaluating our state assessment system as a whole to ensure that we provide uh, metrics for our educators to really lean in and be able to provide. Um, instruction for our students that's needed at the level where they are.
Thank you. I think there is a, it seems like we're making tremendous progress. There's some shining examples of our district. And also at the same time, I guess we can live in both light and dark. Um, light being, look, there's these incredible, this incredible work that's taking place. And so, uh, what, what appears can be seen as a shadow um, in the challenges that we've experienced from a system perspective. Um, that we really have no control over uh, ourselves. We can help influence and we, we have the responsibility to. That's, that's my piece. So thank you for. Thank you for that. I'm gonna turn it over now to public comment. We have. Four individuals who've signed up for public comments. I'm actually, um, Ms. Tampa, I know that you had shared. We, there was a little bit of mix-up here. Um, I'm three, three oh one. Please come on up after uh, Adam Tampa, like that Sarah Comer, Ms. Podinsky. Excuse me. Ms. Podinsky, thank you. And uh, Anna Binder. Thank you.
Hello, Tampa, speaking as an individual. Um, I really did enjoy this uh, presentation. Um, it was really very informative to me for someone who's been. In this district for twenty-four years, worked at over a hundred and sixty schools in every grade level and subject. So I have a lot of experience. I don't know if I'm a master, but I definitely, um, you know, have a lot of trade secrets that I know and have observed. I think um, I, it was really great to hear from the different principals. Also, I've worked at every single one of those schools at different point in time, but not for a while. Um, I currently work with the English language learner students and, you know, I do the small groups, so I do get a lot of intimate contact. And I have for the last six, well, five and a half years. So I do enjoy it. Um, but it gives me a bit of a different perspective, I think, in all the data, the numbers. Uh, when I get a fourth grader that doesn't know the difference between a capital A and a lowercase a. When I get a fifth grader, he doesn't know that you don't write all capitals. So there's a lot of different things that I think, you know, numbers and datas can give you good information. But I think also you need to go into the classroom, sit down, observe, communicate. Talk to people like me who've been in a hundred and sixty schools and worked in every grade level and every subject. Talk to the teachers, not at a professional development, but I mean, sit down and have a real conversation. Not worrying about, you know, that, oh, they're gonna get written up or that they're gonna be documented, but a real heart-to-heart, head-to-head, spirit-to-spirit, if you believe in that. And I don't see enough of that. I see some of it. I do. But I think that that's the component that's been missing from this district since I got here. And it's not missing with everyone. It's there in different places and different times with different people, but it's not consistently throughout the whole district. I also want to give a congratulations to Superintendent Jarrah for uh, getting his contract so that he can continue to work on this. I believe that um, you know, having been here through the pandemic was not a fair assessment of his abilities. And so I think that it's good that he gets more opportunity to show what he can do. So I wanted to say congratulations. The other piece that I wanted to talk about is community involvement. Look at this board meeting. We do not have enough community involvement. We do not have enough parents involvement. I don't know what to do to make that happen. I know I talk till I'm blue in the face and people shut the door and don't want to talk to me anymore. Because they go on with their lives and they don't see it. But I think that that should be a strategic goal. Finding a way to engage the parents and community and then making sure you keep the door open for those of us who come and want to be a part. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Comer.
Sarah Comer for the record. I'd like to draw your attention to the data regarding students eligible for special education. Really, this comment could refer to any of the data flies, but let's talk about a specific one so it's easier to follow. Please refer to page fifteen of thirty, high school achievement mathematics for the remainder of this comment. This is for ACT proficiency rates and mathematics for grade eleven. According to this chart, twenty-four point five percent. Of eleventh graders in CCSD were proficient in math in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. And in nineteen point five percent of eleventh graders in CCSD were proficient in math in twenty-one, uh, sorry, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. I think we can all agree that these percentages are not good, but it is monumentally worse when you look at the students eligible for special education section. From what I can tell, the numbers are uh, looking at two percent of eleventh graders that were eligible for special education services in Clark County School District from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen. Were proficient in math and a terrifyingly low, only one percent of eleventh graders that were eligible for special education services in CCSD in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two were proficient in math. Not only do we have a federally backed legal obligation to these students with IDEA, we have an obligation as educators and public education officials to educate all students with equity and fairness. And we are not doing this. This item is in the category of formative board reports and updates. So I guess this being formative, it is only worth twenty percent of your grade as trustee. But then where's the summative assessment data for special education in Clark County School District? Even a minimum S can save these grades because you clearly have a huge fail when it comes to special education in Clark County School District. You as the board of trustees should be bringing this up every day, all day. It should be on every agenda until all students are being given access to the same opportunities for education. I pay my students three dollars minimum wage per class. They get two dollars for being on time to class with an ID. Don't worry, trustee Sepeda, I have a work-from-home option, so I'll be leaving yours here. And just like my students receive this, their third dollar when they do their jobs as students in my class, you'll get your third dollar minimum wage when you do yours as trustee over all students. Thank you. Ms. Jamie Podinsky. Okay, um, Jamie. It's been a little bit since I've been here. Um, so I'm glad that I got to see the presentation first because it answered a couple of questions that I had. And it also gave me a couple more questions. And I also appreciate hearing from different administrators in the district. Um, who's, some of their schools can mimic my own and others not so much. Um, but I saw my community represented with the east side with Whitney, so I appreciate that. Um, so I often feel like the east side is overlooked. Um, but I'm a high school teacher, so I've gotten very good at Proctor and the ACT. Um, and we know that the ACT is a graduation format in the state, so a hundred percent of our students take it. Um, so we know what the numbers are. We have the charts in front of us. Um, but I'm worried that those results are not equitable. Um, if we look at data across the board, not just the six districts uh, or the six states chosen. Um, only two percent of students in the class of two thousand twenty-two in Maine took the ACT. They had one of the highest national averages um, compared to the hundred percent of students in public school in Nevada. Um, only seven point nine percent of Nevada students last year retook the ACT, even though they can take it as many times as they want. I can tell you from personal experience as a high school teacher, many of the kids come in and they don't care because they see it as yet another test. Another test on another test on another test. Within the first week of school, our kids were on computers, taking math tests. And they had to do I-Ready tests. And then there was more math tests. And then there is other tests and more tests and more tests. Yesterday, the kids took the PSAT test. Next year, they're gonna take the ACT test. They're tested out. And while I agree that curriculum needs an update, our world history books are from two thousand and three. My seniors were born in two thousand and five. Right? We need, we need to do better, but we also need to see that we are standardizing children who should not be standardized. We're putting them into boxes and we're saying, these results are bad. And then our kids think they're bad. And our kids are not bad. And that's constantly the rhetoric that they're seeing. That's constantly what they're seeing online because this is an election year and now we can tweet this data and say, ooh, this candidate is bad. Because the entire state looks bad because we overtest our kids and our kids are not bad. Our kids are tired. Our kids are underfunded. Our kids are sad. Many of our kids are hungry. Many of our kids fell asleep during the ACT last year. They called this today here. If we don't care about the kids and their testing needs, like they're not gonna perform. That's just the fact. Anna Binder.
Anna Binder for the record, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Jarrah. There's a lot to unpack from this conversation. First, I want to begin with a conversation that we talked about when we were working through the anti-racism policy. Um. It's not just an NBE backlog, um, from what. I heard from NDE on curriculum. Um. Even if I published a book today, by the time that it gets published in mass, mass quantity, even hits a list to be approved, then gets through the state. Um, state of Nevada said they're on about a ten-year backlog for new curriculum. So we cannot sit in this room and point a finger at any one part of the system other than the system itself. Um, and I very specifically got that breakout from then because of how certain people in our community were reacting to even. The thought of having an anti-racist book in their school. So I thought that was important. Um, and I think it's still an important answer. Um, and but there could be things in the pipeline that are shorter than that. So, you know, we can only do what we can do. Um. We are seventh in the nation for something. Does anyone here know what that is? We are seventh in the nation for providing access to computer science. For our high school students. Seventh in the nation. Does everyone hear that? It is a great accomplishment. The problem is, is our high school students that are accessing it are predominantly Hispanic and white. When you look at yellow, sped, black, African-American, they are well below like the six percent mark. Why is that? There is a disconnect happening somewhere at the high school level. That only certain demographics of children are actually getting access to a program we're seventh in the nation for. I woke up to that the other day. It was amazing. I also woke up to a newsletter from the um, US Department of Education. And in June, the state of Nevada was given a letter that we are out of compliance. Um, for Title B under the IDEA Act. And we were given a letter with instruction and guidance. And for years, I could tell you, you show me any data point for our special ed kids. And you know we're not in compliance because nobody can measure properly their progress. That's why they're not making any. And then we can demonstrate that they've been provided even. we can't demonstrate that they've been provided even access to achieve goals. So how can we stop failing those kids?
Thank you. Trustee, thank you for your patience. I'm going to move on to one last round of comments. Just a gentle reminder that after an item begins, we will not accept yellow cards. We are going to make an exception this one time. And this is a new process and appreciate everyone's patience. Mr. Evans.
Good evening. For the record, I apologize for not following the policy. I was, I came here after another meeting that I was at, so I apologize for not following the policy. Madam Vice President, I appreciate you making an exception. For the record, again, my name is Ken Evans. For the past couple of years, to include during COVID, I've been serving on the superintendent's student committee for equity and access in terms of trying to make sure that regardless of students' socioeconomic background, we ensure that they have equitable access to opportunities and resources throughout the district. To that end, when I knew that you were going to do a briefing on focus, I tried to get over here as soon as possible. And I did quickly read through the slides. Having done that, my quick immediate observation is that although there are some pockets of excellence, we definitely systematically have some more work to do. In fact, that's part of the reason why our commission was formed. The other thing that quickly I appreciate is the fact that you brought in principals because that was something we discussed that it's imperative that we hear from the frontline managers and supervisors and leaders, if you will. At the same time, I appreciate the comment of one of the previous speakers that it's important to get and hear from individuals that are teachers or frontline in the classroom. Finally, a concern of mine is the fact that if we're going to really ensure we move forward collectively as a community, there needs to be parental engagement and community engagement. And that's the reason why I decided to come up here at the last minute. Because I wanted to make that point personally and stress that point. And I think one of the other individuals did too. As I shared with Superintendent Jarrett, as well as other individuals, you're not in this by yourself. And I share that with all of you as board members. You're not in this by yourself, and that's for two reasons. First and foremost, uh, there are parents out there that care and there are overall community members out there that do care. And then the other thing I'll say, uh, in my previous position, I served as the president for Urban Change over the past nine years. We have an economic development vested interest in terms of the students that have been produced. So as it would, and I'll wrap up, as it was just pointed out a few minutes ago, it does us no good as a youth business community to have eighty-one percent of the students graduate. But when you look at their math, science and other overall achievement, they're not career ready, college ready, or trade ready. So whatever we can do to improve community parental engagement, just know that you're not in this by yourself. Thank you again for indulging me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Trustee Phil West. Hi, Miss Bywaters. Good to see you. Just made the announcement before you. That's right. You're welcome to submit comments after at the end. See, we're walking in. I've made an announcement. I'll make, I'll make that. Miss Bywaters, I'll make an exception this time. I know that you're not, I know that you're familiar with the process.
I am.
Thank you.
Camila Bywaters, President of the Las Vegas Alliance of Black School Educators, Co-Chair for Education for the National Action Network, um, Las Vegas chapter. So the reason that I asked for an exception because an exception was made for one person. So if we allow one, we should allow another person to come up and provide public comment. Right? So that's the point that I'm making in regards to my public comment. And I did just make it into the board meeting. So I didn't hear all of the comments. But if there's an exception for one, there should be an exception for two and three. So the comments that I would like to make in regards to this agenda item is that it's important that as we form committees around educational equity and improving this district, one thing that's important for the community is that we know who the members are and individuals that are a part of these boards and committees. Unfortunately, the perception is that sometimes these committees do not always include a diverse voice, especially teachers who are grounded in educational practices and also scholars who are also grounded in educational practices. So the ask is that there's transparency around, um, the committees, councils, boards within the Clark County School District that the community can be aware of who is on these boards, the expertise that they bring to these boards, especially when we're talking about improving achievement and improving the Focus 2024 goals. Additionally, transparency is really the main point. I have gotten word that there are a couple of committees that are not fully operating in the way that they should. And when I say operating, I mean, there potentially may be forty people on the particular committee or board, but only a few people, maybe three or four, show up. And if there are boards operating in that manner, um, in regards to accomplishing our goals, we should have some evaluation processes in, in, in way so that we can ensure that the individuals who are making decisions about how to move this district forward are people who have expertise in education and are utilizing the expertise of our teachers. Thank you for allowing me to, um, submit my public comment. Again, I was just asking for extra space if a space was given for another member of our community. Thank you.
Trustee Calvassos. Thank you, Madam Vice President. It's very short. Kind of some of the public comment that came in right now, uh, just kind of reminded me of something that Superintendent Jarrett was saying, we're talking about the high school and lack of rigor and a lot of things about the high school. I'm just wondering if the next time that we have our principal come out, do we have a high school representative? We have a high school principal that I love hearing from the elementary and middle school. But I just wonder if possibly that could be, you know, something that is considered. And the other thing is, is that I just cannot let this go by without congratulating Ms. Jamie Chadrinsky on being a, let's see if I get this right, Nevada State Teacher of the Year finalist from Canyon Springs High School. We're so proud of you. She was honored at her school. Thank you so much. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge pronouns. Next. May them. Thank you for that. Thank you. Congratulations. I see another member in the in the board, one. Trustee Brooks.
Thank you again for coming out. I just have one follow-up question. So I think it's very important to add context. As everybody knows, the district's gone through a reorganization, which has shifted a lot of autonomy to schools in order to make decisions as building leaders, instructional leaders to have the autonomy to make the decisions that you need to make in order to drive instruction. So if you, I hate to put you on the spot again, but if you would like to talk about how that decision process works and how you include your staff in that, um, I would love to hear it.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jarrett, Andrea Womack for the record. I would just like to say that at Brinley, the past year, we were able to use our autonomy and our strategic funds to really look at our master schedule. One year, we designed this advisory block that we built into our master schedule. Um, and during that advisory block, we were able to push in some of those SEL supports for our students. It worked out really well for us and because we were able to push a common message through the school that helped our kids with a common language around attributes of highly effective people. Our teachers even got on board with that. Our administrative team got on board with that. All of our staff, they were on board with that. And you knew it because folks were speaking the language of those habits. Kids started calling us by our names, Ms. Womack, Ms. Striver, Mr. Smith, Ms. Bear. Um, and that was the turning point that we knew it was working. So then the next year, we were able to use that autonomy to redesign that master schedule. We renamed that advisory block to Bruin Time. And we put it at the beginning of the school day. And so we were able to welcome kids in with that same language, those social emotional supports to start the school day. Everyone got on board. It was a really effective process with us, with us, and that, that autonomy allowed us to do so. Thank you.
Trustee Brooks. Oh, forgive me. It looks like there's. Please go ahead.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jarrett, Roger West for the record. Um, so just to give a, a example of similar, but a little bit different is at, at best, we had an advisory period that we had built into our master schedule that, that we use for many of the similar things that she said. But, um, our shared leadership structure at Best is obviously have my admin team. Um, and then I have a group that's called our Faculty Senate, and that includes members of teachers, um, both department chairs, some other teacher leaders on campus. But then it also includes some support staff members and, and, uh, other people that are, that are engaged in the work. Um, and we decided that our advisory period was not, um, our teachers talked about wanting to be able to do that, that work, that SEL type work in the context of, of their, um, of the content they're teaching. So, um, this year, we used our autonomy that, uh, that you're speaking of, um, inside of our block schedule to just expand, um, extend a little bit, one of our periods, so that we have the time and we're using, um, the rethink, rethink ed curriculum this year, and we have a monthly focus of that so that we, um, are kind of sending that message and using that message. So, so way that, that our school both liked advisory, was a, there were advantages to it, but then we, we, um, made that decision as a staff and with our SOT to, um, reallocate them. Thank you.
Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jarrett, Sean Cochran Hall for the record. The shared leadership is pretty much what we do. And so that autonomy comes, you know, not a single person decision. Although there are times, the principal has to make that decision, which is easily made. However, we believe in cohesiveness in that community. And it goes as far as my region leadership to my executive leadership, all the way down to our, um, central support and throughout the school. So pretty much is the shared leadership philosophy over on my campus. We know nothing about master schedules. We just have multiple schedules. So it's just a little bit different at the elementary level.
Um, thank you for that. It sounds like one of his secret recipes is growing in the same direction. Being intentional with your energy and sustaining that energy for a long period of time. Couldn't agree more. I appreciate you coming and I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Trustee Brooks. I just want to close this out by sharing that while there are a lot of challenges, I'm incredibly proud of the work that one of the things that I hear from my colleagues is that we're incredibly proud of the growth that has taken place and that we are currently witnessing in the school district. You know, I think we also discuss, uh, one thing that's important to me is that I will continue to wait and also advocate and shine a light on the systemic challenges that exist that we are impacted by, that our students are impacted by, more specifically around graduation requirements, um, around per people funding. And, um, the other piece around our curriculum, that's, uh, that is, uh, adopted by the state or that is, um, instructional materials that are relevant and necessary needed for our educators to do an effective job. Continue to do an effective job. Thank you, uh, trustees. This is not an action item, so we're going to move on. Thank you so much for your time here, everyone. At this time, I want to remind the public if, um, remind you to please, if you have a public comment, you wish to make a comment, that you submit a yellow card in advance. This is your time to do it because once we begin, we will no longer take any more yellow cards. Item four point oh one is public hearing on possible approval of a new memorandum of agreement. Uh, between the Clark County School District and the Education Support Employee Association regarding the increase in pay and training for specialized program teachers assistants. This is the time and place to conduct a public hearing on discussion of and possible actions on approval of the memorandum of agreement between CCSD and ESEA regarding the increase in pay training for specialized program teachers assistants three and four. Those wishing to address the board in person, meeting may speak up by being called up for the board office. This is instructions. Sorry, great. Before, let's turn this over as I am over to Mr. David Hall for an explanation of the M L A.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Jarrett. The veteran vice statute for NRS two eighty-eight point one five three requires that any new extended or modified collective bargaining agreement between a local government employer and its employee organization be approved by the governing body, local government employer at a public hearing. And that the chief executive officer of the local government shall report to the local government the fiscal impact of the agreement. The Board of Trustees in the Clark County School District approved a negotiated agreement with the Education Support Employees Association on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. An agreement has been reached pending approval by the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of Schools regarding a new memorandum of agreement between Clark County School District and the Education Support Employees Association regarding to the increase in pay and training for specialized programs teachers assistance. ESEA and CCSD drafted a new memorandum agreement that provides the pay grade for special education teaching assistants at special schools will be increased from forty-five and forty-seven respectively to forty-six and forty-eight respectively. After successful completion of training, they will be moved to grades forty-seven and forty-nine respectively. In terms of this agreement, it will be effective pers- prospectively from the date of approval and signature of the agreement. There is a fiscal impact of approximately six hundred thousand dollars associated with entering into this memorandum agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. At this time, are there any questions from the dais? Trustee Sabetta. No questions? I'm going to turn it over to public comments. I'm going to start with individuals who have signed up in advance. It's on Tampa. Followed by.
Making up for lost time. Autumn Tampa, speaking as an individual. I am in strong support of this memorandum of agreement. It is a long time coming. I believe that the specialized teacher program assistance, both Title One and non-Title, are probably is the most difficult job in this district. Okay. And I don't belittle anybody else, but it's a totally different kind of job that than any other in this district. I really wish the principals who spoke would have sat here and listened to the rest of the comment because I'd love to see a principal or an assistant principal go in and be an SBT A for a day. I don't think they could do it, most of them. They would be in tears and they'd walk out. So, um, I really wish that we'd have some of that undercover boss stuff going on, and I wish it was mandatory, maybe then. Principals, administrators, and even teachers unfortunately don't even always realize what support staff do. And we are the thankless group. We don't really get thanked enough. I, I, you know, and money helps. I'm going to tell you what, money helps. But also recognition for the job that we do. And this SBT A thing is just fantastic, and I am very happy to hear that it's being done. I hope it extends to all the other Title One schools so that, um, you can fill those positions that are not filled. Because SBTAs are one of the highest positions that are not filled. We used to have a range four, and I don't even know if it's still in the contract. I was trying to find the old contract that had it for the Title One schools instructional assistants and SBTAs. You might want to consider reinstating that as a motivation for instructional assistants and SBTAs to fill those positions. You might want to consider re-stating that as a motivation for instructional assistants and SBTAs to fill those positions and to continue and stay. And I'm not sure what determined those exactly, but I was an SBTA for a couple of years and I'll tell you what was the hardest thing I ever did. So thank you for listening. Thank you for doing this and let's continue that recognition of these hardworking ladies. Thank you. And
Thank you. Anna Binder, and then Jen Giles. Let's see, Ms. Anna Binder in the room. Let's go ahead, Ms. Jen Giles, and we'll give Anna Binder a chance to come up next after you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Jara, members of the board, Jen Giles, the ESEA president, speaking in support of this MOA that will increase the range and pay for Title One SBTAs in the district. This is a great start for the four specialty schools and we look forward to this continuing and affecting the remaining SBTAs and all the other Title One schools eventually. This is a well-deserved. This, this is well-deserved for the hardworking employees as Autumn spoke and said, they, the work they do is incredibly difficult. It is not an easy job. It is thankless and it also includes a lot of physical abuse. We are encouraged that this will help with retention and the recruitment problem. Again, thank you. Please vote yes for this MOA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anna Binder.
Anna Binder, for the record again, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. I also am super thrilled to see this well-deserved raise. As many of you know, I have special education kids and those aides have been so instrumental in their growth, their development. They love our kids so very much and these are people that do things that most parents have a hard time doing with their own children. So this is a wonderful step in the right direction for them. I'd like to see him get a little more in the future. I will advocate for that. But again, please vote yes. We love them. We need them.
So we have some trustees in the queue, Trustee Williams. Go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with public comment. I think these don't get enough credit they deserve. It's a hard job. It's a thankless job. It's an emotional job. My mom did it for years. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item four point zero one.
Thank you for giving me, thank you for that, Trustee Williams. I want to make sure that I know for the record that the public hearing is is now closed. Thank you for your motion. Trustee Galassos?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to second trustee Williams' motion and strong support and repeat that this is a good step in the right direction. It's a good start. Thank you.
Excellent. We have a motion by trustee Williams, second by trustee Galassos. Trustees, please pass your ballot. Trustee Sabella?
Aye.
Excellent. That is six to zero. Moving on. Item four point oh two. Before I call item four point oh two, is there, if there is anyone who has not submitted public comment speaker card, please do so now. This is a public hearing and possible action on the memorandum of agreement between Clark County School District and the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees regarding extra pay for twelve month administrators, administrator with additional responsibility. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. David Hall for an extension of that MOA.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. Again, the veteran vice statute two eighty eight point one five three requires that any new extended or modified collective bargaining agreement between a local government employer and an employee organization be approved by the governing body, the local government employer at a public hearing. And that the chief executive officer of the local government shall report to the local government the fiscal impact of the agreement. The Board of Trustees of the Clark County School District or CCSD approved a negotiated agreement with the Clark County Association of School Administrators and Professional Technical Employees or CAFI on October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one. An agreement has been reached pending approval by the Board of Trustees and the Superintendent of Schools regarding a new memorandum of agreement between CCSD and CAFI regarding extra pay for a twelve month administrator with additional responsibilities. This administrator will be on call for CCSD's connection line program. It is backdated to August twenty twenty two until the program is no longer needed or funding is no longer available. The CAFI and CCSD drafted a new memorandum agreement to allow for the extra pay for a twelve month employee with additional responsibilities. The terms of this new agreement will be effective retroactively and prospectively from the date of approval and signature. There are additional costs associated with entering into this memorandum agreement, which total five thousand two hundred and eighty eight dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I don't see any public comment on this item. I'm going to turn it over to trustees on the, or forgive me, before I move on to trustee discussion or motions, I'd like to make a note that the public hearing is now closed. Trustee Williams?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve item four point zero two.
Thank you. Trustee Galassos?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'd like to second trustee Williams' motion.
Thank you both. We have a motion by trustee Williams, a second by trustee Galassos. Trustees, please pass your ballot. Trustee Sabella?
Aye.
We have a six, this passes six to zero. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Hall. We're going to now move on to item four point oh three. Notice of intent for Clark County School District Regulation twenty one thirty, before we open this item. If you, if you'd like to make public comment on this item and have not completed a public speaker card, please do so now. This is the time for discussion and possible action on approval of the notice of intent to adopt repeal or amend the Clark County School District Regulation twenty one thirty, district organization prior to the and this is information, prior to the Board of Trustees for approval on which we separate this. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kelly Calpall.
Oh, wow. Oh, wow, huh? We're going to get it right. Not Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara, Kelly Calpall, off the record.
Hi, I'm. What you see before you is a second notice of intent under construction draft of the new district regulation twenty one third district organization. As you know, the board approved a first notice of intent with changes on September eighth, twenty twenty two, with the intention of bringing back the regulation to the board for a final approval today. However, there are some changes recommended by staff that are beyond what was discussed in that meeting. So we're bringing the back, the item back as a notice of intent again with final approval expected before you at the twenty seventh of October regular board meeting. To confirm the changes discussed at December, at the September eighth meeting that have been included, I'll run through those really quickly. On page six removes the requirement that only the principal may request an appeal of the CFO's decision related to the review of allocation methodology for transfer responsibilities. This would allow the SOT to request an appeal also. On page eight, further clarifying the SOT participation in the hiring of the principal, whether that principal is being hired from a pool of candidates into a vacant position or if the principal is being placed into an already occupied principal position. On page fourteen, requiring principals to utilize carry forward dollars purposefully with a focus on student outcomes in alignment with the school performance plan. On page sixteen, requiring the superintendent to monitor the use of carry forward dollars to ensure funds are spent on students for whom they were allocated to the greatest extent possible. On page twenty three, requiring principals to seek advice and assistance from the school organizational team regarding fees, contributions, or purchases requested or required of parents in consideration of the school budget, including carry forward and supply dollars. Also on page twenty three, clarifying that a majority of the voting members excluding vacancies is required for any action of the SOT. And then on pages twenty eight, twenty nine, updating the second of the three dispute resolution processes to align with the regulation recently passed by the state board and approved by the legislative commission. Finally, the changes that triggered this second notice of intent in consideration of additional input from the Nevada Department of Education. Staff recommends waiting to include some pieces in the district regulation that will require cleanup language by the legislature first. Those two things are the region superintendents fulfilling responsibilities of school associates and retainers and some of the practicalities around forming SOTs at schools with inconsistent enrollees or part-time employees and at small school. We are still holding conversations with Nevada, with the Nevada Department of Ed and the State Board of Ed related to our assertion that the items that the district is required to carry out and pay for are restricted. This is the current topic of conversation with the state boards, eighty four sixty nine, so committee, and is expected to continue in the coming months.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to trustees, the dais, their question? Oh. Questions, no questions? So trustee Sabella?
No questions. I'm ready to make a motion once. Public comment is done.
Thank you. We'll come back to you. We're going to move on to public comment. There is one member of the audience who signed up in advance, that's Ms. Autumn Tampa. After Autumn, we're going to have Jen Giles and Jamie Tridensky. Mr. Bayless, there. Thank you for that. There are four people. This is who I'm starting with. Welcome.
Still being cautious. Okay, Autumn Tampa, speaking as an individual. Although I am speaking as an individual, I am a strong ESEA member and in strong support of what our president, Jen Giles, is going to speak and in hundred percent agreement with her. My own part that I would like to say is that I have a great deal of concerns with this at this time. I really do not think that this should be brought up for a vote until some of the legal issues are resolved. I can tell you, I think it's no secret that I think this is the worst thing that ever happened to the school district and I know a lot of people would disagree and that's okay. But based on what I've seen and heard and how, in my opinion, this has made things more confusing, but also, well, it's made the contracts difficult to enforce and follow because of extra legal issues and concerns because of this new law. I believe that this law takes away the rights of employees that we worked hard for, that we actually went on strike for years ago, and then they created laws that said employees can't go on strike who are members of education. So there are a lot of different things that are in the history of this. But my biggest fear is that we are not going to be treated fairly and we already have a hard time being treated fairly. I'm going to tell you that support staff are the bottom. Okay, they really are. And I think the contracts right now, a lot of principals are not even following the contract as written. And they see this law and the continuation of this as a way to undermine and say, you know, that contract doesn't really mean anything. So we're just going to do whatever we feel like. And I don't know, because I would say that this is something that Superintendent Jara does need to enforce, is that principals need to honor the contracts as written until they are changed. That is not happening. I can tell you that for a fact. People come to me, it's not happening. So that is one of my biggest concerns. I think the legalities and the details of the rip process, the surplus process, principals not wanting somebody in their school who's had twenty years of experience, for goodness sake, why not? If you have a vacancy, why don't you want that person? You don't even know them. So there's got to be some better things put in place before you make a decision. And if you make a decision on something that's not, you know, gone through the legal processes and been decided yet and that could hurt your staffing issues, I don't think that's a good decision. So I would ask you to not vote to move this forward, but to hold it off until those things are decided. Because it is a very controversial issue and I'll tell you what, it's one that is a hot button for me. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tampa, Jen Giles.
Hello again, Madam Chair, Superintendent Jara, trustees, Jen Giles, ESEA, ESEA president, speaking against Regulation twenty one thirty. The ESEA Legal Council emailed you all a legal opinion on how this regulation is not in line with the language passed by the legislature. This will affect Articles twenty five and twenty six of the ESEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. By eliminating seniority as a benefit for all ESPs, you will continue to have retention and recruitment problems. ESPs are the lowest paid in the district and benefits like seniority are important to us. Employees being allowed to select a vacancy in a school that a principal hasn't hired that it will somehow impact student achievement or the school rating is just unrealistic. I ask that you table any action for this regulation until the Nevada Supreme Court has made a rule on the pending lawsuit. There will be a hearing for oral arguments on November eighth. Please support ESPs. We are the core of this district and it cannot operate without us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Then we have Ed Gonzalez and Anna Binder.
Do you need to, for the record? So eighty four sixty nine is not being implemented correctly within the district. I think we're all aware of that. And although I think this is moving towards the right direction, there are definitely valid concerns that our support staff are going to be further hurt by this. They're already overworked, underpaid. We're not seeing collaboration from everyone in Nevada who should be involved with educational decisions. The state board needs to be doing more. You as a board trustee needs to be doing more. School admin and SOT members need to be uniformly informed and involved in what's happening. I've been on SOT at my school for three years and I've been the secretary of it for two years. Most of the training was on my own. And so I find that a lot of people are very poorly trained. One of my companion teachers who was just elected to the board called me and said, what is this? I just hit accept. So I think therein lies part of the problem that people are very poorly informed about what the SOT does, what the functions are, and it's easy to abuse that situation. I like our new principal very much, so I just want to put that on record. But when we went through the process of interviewing, there was only one candidate who had been there for almost half of school year. And we were told as an SOT, like this is pretty much dress of formality. Right? So we're lucky that we have a good principal. But some schools are not so lucky. And I've heard horror stories there about not being involved or completely being overridden. All right, the SOT should stand for something, right? I ran for it because I'm nosy, let's be honest. I want to see the budget. But it also provides a great platform for people to communicate. Teachers will often come to me and ask me questions that I can get put on the agenda. Things that they want answered, but maybe don't necessarily want to say themselves. Even parents have reached out because I have their kid and they're like, hey, can you find this information out? So they serve a purpose, but the bill right now is vague and easily abused. I, like I said, I think we're moving in the right direction, but it can't be at the detriment of our support staff. We want it run without them. I get to be really lucky at my school and my classroom is in a, a lot of our specialized classrooms. And I see how hard our ESPs work from chasing kids to having to change diapers, to going to every single class, right, to being their emotional supports. They're really valuable and we can't lose that in the midst of all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed Gonzalez. And then Anna Binder, can I just like to make a note for Mr. Bayless? I haven't signed it up for item five.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. I apologize. I guess I gave a third crack at talking about this, so. I appreciate the feedback that I got from the trustees and the email I sent today. I got really, the majority of them. Someone speaking supported this. I don't think this is a perfect policy. I mean, I think the good policy, I think it's just good enough to get to the purpose. But as we see more changes, maybe I should wait till that one comes back. I listed four major concerns to the email. I also submitted it to board docs for public comments. I won't get into that, but it's very similar. Last time, I think I submitted twelve or fourteen items, all but four have been resolved. Some of them are the same things Ms. Calpall called, and I believe I said that right a bit, trying to practice like everybody else. Is, is stuff on the state board of education, eighty five fifteen, the principals, if someone's lateral movement, I don't like the language. Is stuff on State Board of Education, eighty-five fifteen, the principals, if someone's lateral movement, I don't like the language, or it says to the greatest extent of the law. I think the law says something very clear that has to be part of the process. In fact, Gold mentioned in Canyon Springs, the fact that like this is pretty much decided is not what the law says, is not what that process is. But I put that in writing. But I think what we need to do is we need to sort of figure out how to move forward onto this, how to work together. And so I wrote down some of the words that Mark Newbern, the State Board of Education Vice President, said, we've got to work together on some of these items. The eighty-five fifteen, I'm moving on, and make sure that some of this stuff gets implemented. Training is very important, but for me to stand here and say I would oppose this would mean that I oppose the dispute resolution process in this in this policy, to oppose if a school questions the cost analysis, right, and has an opportunity to ask the CFO, is this a correct cost? It would mean I would oppose that as well. And more importantly, it would mean I would oppose a way to, SOTs or principals, believe there's a process to improve that we can send those things to the superintendent and get some feedback, and not necessarily the process of whether the law is saying, I got a good idea, and I don't know if we could do this or not. And so to sit here and say I oppose this, would oppose all those things, and I'm not willing to do that. I think those are important processes. I once again want to thank trustee Brooks, trustee Williams, and trustee Guzman, wherever she is, because you guys worked on this. And we're trying to move forward. We're creating processes, because most of the time we're going to the State Board, or we're yelling at this meeting, and this isn't what it's supposed to happen. You know, if we have a concern, we submit something to the superintendent, and superintendent sends it over to somebody, and we have a process. We move on to the next step, and the next step. And so, as you know, the reorg was designed in twenty-fifteen with a whole bunch of money coming down to schools. You know, we had victory schools, we had a whole bunch of dollars coming in, and giving more power and more autonomy to principals. But also, as we move forward, we have to make sure we have the accountability. And so principals, you know, when they're deciding, like, how do we best increase and achieve and design innovation, has to make sure that everybody's involved. And so what I like is about the school plan of operation, talking about carryover dollars. That should be sort of like, what is the culture of the building potential, not just the student achievement? So I have more time, I guess, next meeting to talk about this. So Madam Vice President, thank you.
And I find it for the record again, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jara. Again, I'm just gonna echo what Ed said. I won't repeat anything. But I also want to acknowledge, you know, that the discussion of the unions outlook on the interpretation and their allegations of the conflicting language. I mean, I don't know if that's just something we could take out. Again, it's not perfect, but this document has brought us a long way in the past. You know, we've only worked on this as a board, what, this year? Very short timeframe, but these issues have been coming to the State Board for a while now, right? And I feel like we're getting the horse before the cart now. I am really, though, concerned about the training, because member Newbern very specifically said a very long time ago, he didn't think that it would be correct about the district provide the training for the law that supported the SOTs, because then there was room for mistraining or misinterpretation. But I also believe that the state isn't looking to pay for the training either. So I'm very nervous, but fortunately, Ed and I and a lot of people are paying attention, so when that training comes forward, we'll be looking at it. And I want to know, because you know I've spoken about it before, but we really do need to get a centralized place where we can access SOT minutes. Again, you guys know the minutes are gross, they're inadequate for the most part. And they don't ever really properly reflect discussions or items that were on an SOT agenda, which becomes hugely problematic. I know, for not just schools but parents, because they'll come to me and go, well, hey, I brought this. This was supposed to be the resolve, but now we're six months later with a new principal, and there's no record of any of that action. So also, I think in the last couple weeks, I asked, I never got an answer. No, I didn't send an email. But when I found out that City of Henderson has twenty-nine new principals inside five years, how many of those principals were just placed at the schools, and how many were actually, you know, followed through, through the SOT and the spirit of the law? And honestly, I think that's an answer that the entire community is entitled to across the entire district, because that was the spirit of the law, was for our communities to have a say in who was leading them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on this and your work on our committee. A couple of questions. One is, which part of the reorg did the state find the district not in compliance? And does this policy rectify that?
Madam Vice President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Jara, trustee Brooks, the state superintendent found us not in compliance with the requirement that we have a policy for the resolution of disputes related to a member of the SOT's participation on the SOT that would broaden to any dispute resolution related to the reorganization with the recent adoption of the Legislative Commission of recent regulation at the state level. And yes, this regulation at the district level does fulfill that.
Thank you. And then is there a centralized place for minutes and agendas?
Madam Vice President, Members of the Board, Dr. Jara, trustee Brooks, there is at reorg.ccsd.net.
Okay, and then I notice sometimes frequently there's a delay in minutes being posted. I am going to make the assumption as someone who adopts minutes through a process, is that because those minutes are not posted until they're formally adopted by the SOT?
Madam Vice President, Members of the Board, Dr. Jara, trustee Brooks. In the mechanism that we use for the region offices to monitor the uploading of SOT materials, they are not marked as late, minutes are not marked as late until the end of the month following the next meeting of the SOT to allow them time to approve those minutes, if that is an activity that they engage. Not all SOTs do that, but some do.
That's an interesting point. Couple just comments. I want to explain some comments that I know was made previously about the reorg and enthusiasm specifically. When legislation is driven by communities and the communities demand legislation, there is active participation and enthusiasm. So I think that's the difference between legislation that is driven by a community versus not driven by a community. Good legislation doesn't require salespeople, because it serves the interest of the community. The community wants it, so they step up and they engage. And I think that that's the difference. I do appreciate the nuance that you've added to the policy, and the reason that I have been so insistent on this, because I do not think that the reorg law by itself gets us there. I think it's an idea, it's not a means of implementation. I don't even know that it has a spirit necessarily. I know I hear that a lot. I appreciate you bringing us to something a little bit more useful, because I do think that there are some pieces that are fundamentally missing. If we want to drive academic outcomes at the school level, obviously, schools need to be in charge of that process. They are the closest people to students, they're the closest people to families. I appreciate your work on this, and I appreciate you adding some more usefulness to this and making sure that we are in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. So I do have some several concerns about this, especially what we already heard from ESEA and especially the elimination of seniority for support staff. Specifically, it applies to our issues of staffing. And I don't know that it's going to be helpful for recruitment especially, but also retention. You know, we're competing against a lot of industries for support staff, and when someone's considering where to go work, there are other options where they would be able to tap into seniority-based perks and pay. So I feel like this could have major and quick unintended consequences. But I will say that I'm going to vote yes on this, only because we have made progress on this work. But also because if it turns out that the district is, that we did this wrong, and that the Supreme Court comes back and says, no, per our policies, only trustees who voted yes to push an item through can request that it comes back to be voted on differently. I'm sure I wouldn't be the only trustee doing that at that time, but that is why I'm a yes on this right now. But I do, I would like you to clarify for the record. What would happen if we were to either modify the policy right now and just hold off on that, either approve all of it except for that one stipulation passed November eighth? What would happen if we did that? And also, how necessary is it to include that right now? And I guess what would happen if we just waited on this in general?
Madam Vice President, Members of the Board, Dr. Jara, trustee Ford, there's a few aspects to this answer. Number one, if we remove that part of this regulation, push it forward, we would be in compliance with the notice of noncompliance. We would be on track to meet our deadline of November first for our plan of action. We would still be on track to that. That stipulation, which is now in alignment with the recent state regulation recently adopted by the Legislative Commission, we are in alignment with that regulation. So this is not a decision that this board has made, this is the decision that the State Board has made and that we are now beholden to. So if we remove that piece, that puts us at risk for another notice of noncompliance, because that whole conversation was to help us get into alignment, I'm sorry, into compliance with one of those other pieces that we were not in compliance for. So that would introduce us to a new level of risk in terms of compliance, which means we would start this whole process again. Now that there is a state regulation with noncompliance, that would also put us at risk for going through that whole process. So there's some risk there. In terms of this regulation versus the seniority, I would have to rely on the council to really speak closer to that.
So I guess I'm thinking there's risks both ways. So then it's like, bad calculate your risks, and go which risk is riskier? Do we think that, do we think that the state, knowing that they gave us their opinion, and knowing that they watch these meetings, and knowing that we are trying to first of all comply with the law, and also work with our collective bargaining units and make sure that we are complying with all laws, even federal? Do you think personally with what you know about the state and everything, they would, you know, go after us or say we're out of compliance before November eighth? If we were to push this through with that minor change, or would they, do you think they'd be like, we'll wait and see what happens, knowing that you most likely would push this through if the result fails or whatever?
Madam Vice President, Members of the Board, Dr. Jara, trustee Ford, I couldn't speak to their timing outside of assuming they would wait until the final adoption on October twenty-seventh. And then if the board were to adopt a policy, that clearly leaves us not in compliance with one of the things we already know we're not in compliance with. Because then what happens is, if I could have council confirm or tell me if I stated incorrectly, that the agreements would no longer solve that point of noncompliance without this definition and the state regulation. That regulation already having been made, that is now has the power of law, and so not implementing that, regardless of whether or not we put it in the policy, will put us into noncompliance. I could not speak to the timing of when they would notify us of that, but they would be able to immediately if on October twenty-seventh.
So you're kind of saying that we have to implement it, but we don't necessarily have to put it in this policy, that if it was not in this policy, this policy would still pass?
Trustee Ford, we were not required to put that in policy, no, but it feels like that would go against the purposes of the policy, which was to be comprehensive. I'd like to, trustee Ford, I'd like, there were multiple times where council was a turn to. Do we have any additional insight from council?
I really do not have anything else other than what has already been said, except for the fact that the regulation is already passed, we're following the regulation, and we're putting, we have to follow what the regulation says. And we're putting this in our policy to be able to be comprehensive and to comply with what the State Board of Education has.
Thank you. You know, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, and I can make a motion, and you guys can still talk afterwards.
Trustee Ford, there, trustee, she wanted to make a motion. So if you'd welcome to do a second, just allow me one second.
Did she say I was that?
She said from the very beginning.
All right, I'll make a summary amendment to your motion.
We have a quote to keep writing.
I'm ready.
Okay, you want to go ahead and give us a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to adopt. I think if I can make just a couple of comments. I think first, we always knew we would have to make adjustments to this policy. Again, there's still a lot, there's still some pieces in the air that will require us to make adjustments. Secondly, certainly, we are working on deadlines, and even though this year we're making a whole lot of efforts and have made work towards eighty-four sixty-nine compliance, one of our priorities, we still recognize there's still a lot of work to do, but we want to make sure that we're still being our piece of brains that I have and said for us by the Department of Education. I think it's really important that we are true to our word, what we said we could do, and one of the things, I believe, Kelly could, or Miss Cole, Cole, Cole Paul could share, is it our November first is one of the deadlines we're trying to meet?
That's correct.
So I think trustee Ford can make the, can make the the motion. I just need to kind of give those two pieces just to know, because those are already on our forefront of our minds. We know we're going to have to make changes. And we know that we also have deadlines that we want to respect, because we want to be good partners with the folks that are over at the State Board. So I'll toss this over to trustee Ford to make her motion. But I definitely wanted to make that statement before we moved on. Trustee Ford?
Thank you, President Cepeda. I greatly appreciate that. I am making this motion for transparency. I think even if this motion fails, it's good to let the community see different options. I would like to move to approve this version of it without including the portion that might be detrimental to support staff while there is still a pending legal dispute right now. I think that it is less risky to wait on that portion of it than it is to approve the whole thing right now. So again, to repeat my motion, the entire item, which I to approve Clark County School District Regulation twenty-one thirty without the portion that affects support staff and the elimination of their seniority.
Thank you, trustee Ford. Can you clarify, for the record, what portion are you specifically speaking?
I may have to find it. Where, I guess, Kelly?
Yes.
I feel like the intent is out there, public comment is pretty clear, and we have emails specifically doing it.
Yes, we definitely, trustee Ford, we would benefit from having a very specific motion so that it is clear to members who are voting what they are removing.
All right, where, Kelly, which line exactly was Jan Giles and Autumn Tampa referring to in this policy?
If you don't mind, Madam Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you. I um, well, I appreciate Kelly's diligence. I think it's really important when we do make motions. That we are very specific. So like uh before I ask for a second, I think it's important to help.
You can wait a minute or whatever, Sam. I looked at it when I saw the email come in, but now I'm like.
Thank you. Um Kelly, I'm gonna actually ask for some help here. Um well, I really appreciate your due diligence on this end, and I know you know this. I'll see back and forth uh forth.
Okay, it looks like it's nine. And then, yes, there it is.
Okay, Trustee Ford, so can you please restate your motion for the record?
I think we should just uh approve Regulation twenty one thirty without nine included for now, until we've had, until at least November eighth, when we have more information about pending legal issues.
Thank you, Trustee Ford. So four point oh three approved without section. I see there are more trustees in the queue. I'd like to see if there's a second. Thank you for weighing in. I appreciate that.
Um I know that we've done this before, though, with multiple policies and regulations.
Thank you so much, counsel. Um Trustee Ford, I'm gonna move on to.
Well, hold on, then I'll say, can Ivy please bring this back to the board? Then we would see another draft of this. It would have passed. We'd see another notice of intent at the next board meeting, and it might put us back two weeks. Okay. That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'm gonna now move on to trustees for in the queue and also seeking a second. Let's take the muscles.
Thank you, Vice President, um, Garcia Monas. So um again, um Kelly, um Colwell Paul. It sounds like I'm calling you KP. I got it right? First of all, we appreciate all your hard work on this and your unbelievable patience on our briefings with our questions. So I just want to clarify, and I think that this is going back more to Board Attorney Miss Malish. When you say that we would have to start over, you're saying start over with the notices of intent. Is that what you're clarifying? And that would set us back a time period of two weeks? And then, yes, that's just what you just said, is from clarify. And then we would end up with, where would we end up with on our deadline to not be in a bad place? Let's just put it like that.
Excuse me, Madam Vice President, um members of the board, Dr. Jarrah, we would not meet. We would not meet the deadline?
We would not meet the deadline.
Alright, thank you. Uh that's all I have on my question.
Are you, are you stepping in? Trustee, the muscles.
I'm not seconding. I am at this point right now, just uh holding off because if we are gonna come back in two weeks, when, you know, I'm just troubled by restarting all over. It sounds like we'd have to start all over. You're just saying the process, not the actual content. I think that's what people are misunderstanding.
Thank you, Trustee, the muscles. I'm gonna move on. And I don't hear a second, so I'm moving on to, that's fine, Stu Williams.
Thank you, Vice uh Vice Chair. I would like to make a motion to approve item four point zero three, those have been sent to County School District Regulation one three.
Trustee Williams, am I hearing you make them a sep- a separate motion?
Yes, it's just a normal, regular motion, vote to approve the notice of intent. I want us to meet the deadline. I understand there's concerns. I'm also very hopeful that this will work out the way it should.
And is there a second? Trustee Brooks.
I will second the motion made by Trustee Williams to approve the item.
Okay, we have an active motion on the floor at this time. Trustees, I'd like to request um the votes. Just he's about.
Aye.
The item passes six to zero. How interesting, Guzman, that's not in attendance. Thank you, trustees. Thank you, Ms. Kelly Kowal. Wow, okay. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Kelly. We're gonna move on to item four point oh four, the legislative platform. This is a discussion on possible action regarding the approval of the Clark County School District's state legislative platform for the twenty point three Nevada legislative session. Before I open, before I continue on, is there anyone who, if there is anyone in the audience who does not have a chance to complete a yellow public speaker card, please do so now. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Todd Story. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, Trustee Superintendent, our Todd Story Chief Communications Officer for the record. Um what we have before you tonight uh is the platform that we discussed uh previously during briefings. Uh the platform constitutes the two BDRs that you voted on and approved to move to the legislative panel. Bureau, BDR three seventy nine revises provisions related to teachers. BDR three eighty six revises provisions relating to the governing bodies of certain education entities. Then we have categorized the other remaining uh proposals uh from board and staff recommendations uh through the process of elimination and then therefore are left with those uh proposals that we would seek to support should some other legislator or entity um move something forward uh with regard to student learning or to workforce issues, mental health, health and school safety. Um and then we would remain neutral on the call for an audit per CCSE financing, finances, um including the S R funds. And then we would uh seek to oppose efforts to reconstitute the organization of large school districts in Nevada. Action that negatively impact the intent and integrity of the people-centered funding plan. Any unfounded mandates or measures that undermine acceleration of student learning in schools. There any questions on that page?
Trustees? Trustee Williams?
Thank you. I just have one question. So the, the section where you say is support, is this the order in which you would support those? It's like your priority?
They're not, they're not in this. No, it's just, it's just the listing of those items that were not uh made it as BDR and pushed forward to the legislative council bureau.
And this is a, this is all the stuff that was on our previous.
Trustee, the muscles.
Uh thank you, um, Madam Vice President, uh Mr. Start on BDR three eighty six revising the provisions relating to the governing bodies of certain education entities. We all know what education entities are. Um we don't have any specific things put together on that yet.
We do not. Those are in development. I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, Trustee Superintendent, uh, Trustee the muscles. We will be uh moving those recommendations to the L C D. Um hopefully by tomorrow or the latest Monday, we will be sharing those uh as we progress.
Reading my mind again, I've just been ready to ask the timeline and go ready for you. And I think that Trustee Williams already asked about as far as the um, if we could kind of like to see here. On the, sort on the student learning, uh here when we were talking about the associated funding, so those kind of tie together with the people centered funding plan, do they not? So we just have them listed separately, can we encompass both aspects?
Sure, Madam Vice President, Trustee Superintendent, so what this uh, the reason it's sorted this way is that um at the, as it's become known, the fiscal cliff with S R funding. Uh in December of twenty twenty four, we would seek that the state hopefully will continue the programs that have been demonstrated to be successful in accelerating student learning, so that we will be seeking opportunities to to see funding continue beyond the federal dollars that will expire at the end of twenty twenty four.
Thank you, and I appreciate the answer by trying to uh be cognizant of the constituents' question that came in shortly before the meeting. I think that is uh the only one. I do have some questions coming in that are not for me, that are for constituents, how to do with second one, how to do with workforce on the uh trade representatives and the teaching and with that requiring a teaching license. But the questions were not specific enough, but waiting were worded up for the wait on that because they'll pretty much know what we've been briefed on. Thank you very much.
Trustee Ford.
Alright, thank you so much. Um, does this document, is this a draft right now for us? To give our feedback on, or is this just preventing it to us?
No, this is, this would be the final that we would uh, we would have an action item tonight to move this forward as the platform for the school board of trustees going into the twenty twenty two legislative session. So this would be the platform, this first page.
Okay, um, I I know this is uh your guys' first time doing this with us, but just for some context, in the past, um I think every year, except maybe, yeah, at least two different sessions, um, we would sit or do Zoom. And before we saw this item, it was like, we had a meeting and they went through all of it and asked for our input. I guess I would have given just a little bit of input, maybe asked a couple of questions, but I I'm actually really happy with this. I think that it um, it does encompass the meeting that we had recently, and I actually really appreciate that all of the um efforts that we brought up individually and spoke about as being possible bills that this district, this board is you know, pretty heavily included in this first page, so I appreciate that. Um but my comment would be of those things that we discussed. One that's missing, it seems, is um supporting something around taking testing off of teachers' plates or eliminating at least one of the different testing options available for our students. And or possibly doing something um to make it easier for teachers to make it through the day. Quite frankly, that was trustee Bivon's suggestion. Um if she was on the phone right now, I'm sure she'd be like, bringing it up. So I guess my question is, just how come that wasn't included in here?
Sure, Madam President, Trustee Superintendent, so we did have conversations last week during board briefings where this document was reviewed.
Okay.
And so um trustee Guzman did not bring that question forward um at that time, but we also um narrowed this list to include those things legislatively um that were specifically um targeted to legislation that forced uh in the, considered at the state level, at the legislative level, things that were proposed that did not have an impact that would have been legislated. So in order to reduce workloads on teachers, um we would have had to have had very specific you know, proposals in order to to be able to identify those things. But we did not turn that forward, but trustee Guzman did not raise that question before the briefing last week.
Okay, um, I just want to find the record that I'm really happy that we, that we are pro um updating sex education statutes for instruction to be opt out rather than opt in. I've pushed this pretty hard a couple of times with the trustees and uh I don't think we ever really got to a majority. And so the fact that CCSE as a district is willing to uh support this, I hope that some legislators are taking notice and uh will consider fishing, putting a bill through because I know I would personally be giving comments about that. Uh that would impact a lot of students. Um and then I guess my question, and I was on the briefing because I chose to leave it early, but I was upset by some other things I heard on the briefing. The, how come we're remaining neutral on the auditing of CCSE finances, including S R funds?
So uh, Madam Vice President, Trustee Superintendent, we did not want to take a position for against that. We, our books, um we're audited annually as a a function of the school district. Um and we do not want to take a position for or against it. We, you know, if that's what the legislature chooses to do to move forward with that audit, we'll have to wait and see that the rule remains neutral since it affects us directly. And and we'll see what decisions that the legislature makes uh through the legislative process.
Thank you. Um I guess my comments for the record would be just, you know, I I still don't support, even though the board pushed it through. The um bill draft to ask the legislature to establish standards and qualifications for all education boards, such as ourselves and the regions. Um but I feel like if we are willing to go in and give them that authority, what's the difference of letting them come in and do an audit, especially if it's going to piss um in a position where we could prove that we are being really physically responsible with our funds and even make a case, a really strong case for the state to give us more money. So I feel like if we are truly auditing ourselves correctly, we should have welcomed that. And that would put us in a position to get even more funding quicker than if we didn't do that. So um I personally welcome anybody coming in and either checking if we are not auditing ourselves correctly or confirming that we are. Um transparency is really important to me, and anything that we can do to uh help our public image with that, I think is something that the entire district should support. Uh I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Ford. I wanna turn it over to Dr. Jarrah.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board. Um the reason we remain neutral, as Mr. Story mentioned, our books are open. Uh they're on the website, so anybody can see them today. Up and there, that'll be so the transparency is there, and we have received great audience. Our ratings have gone up and our finances as far as our state and our federal dollars. As I've shared with the federal government, they, the federal government has allocated the dollars and at the end of this month, this board will receive an update on where we are with our federal spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jarrah. And Stu, Trustee Brooks, is in the queue.
Thank you. Are we able to add points into this? I think it's editable.
Madam Vice President, Trustee Superintendent, trustee books are used. Suggesting that you would like to add items in one of the categories for support, opposition or neutrality?
Yes.
I believe you can, yeah, you can do whatever you want.
I um a hundred percent agree that the district's actually in the, one of the best financial places that it's been, and it's been a very dedicated um effort on half of the district, and our books are open. Uh we get audited annually, we actually get audited by the same people that audit the state, so it's not like it's um an unknown person or unknown process. I would be very interested, though, in supporting an audit for the Nevada Department of Education. I would also be in support of any bill that would give up support or infrastructure at the state level because I do think that they do not have um enough staff. I don't think that they have enough infrastructure, so if that means they need more funding. If they need to evaluate their compensation, whatever it is, I would be supportive of making sure that there is good infrastructure at the state because that trickles down to districts.
Points of clarification were for us to um add. Uh I love, if we mean to hear a motion specifically right to add motion to approve and add. Note that, Trustee Brooks. Trustee, the muscles, have you had a moment to share already?
No.
Okay, thank you. I think you got that. Trustee Saba, do you have any comments that you'd like to share at this time?
Thank you. Um, I guess, first always, thank you so much for the work on this platform. Honestly, I'd be, uh, I was uh in full transparency. I was actually very in favor of just putting the audit in support. I think there's too many pieces where uh that are still unknown to fully put in the support, so I understand why uh it ended up falling in mutual territory. Um but either way, I'm supportive slash neutral on this auditing piece. Uh, it ended up falling in neutral territory. Um, but either way, I'm supportive slash neutral on this auditing piece. Um, very supportive of the audit. Uh, even, I, I guess I'm a, I'm a person of habit. So if we're going to every couple of years audit the. School districts, educational organizations, I am a big supporter of, hey, let's just put that annually on our calendar and just do it. Every decade or so, very supportive of auditing of our state department bed and honestly, districts across the state, I feel like that's fair to do. Um, and. Uh, I, I also think it's, it's good practice to. To make sure that we're all kept accountable. Um, I would make another plea for trustees to please stay in. In their briefings, a lot of things happening in the briefings that staying five minutes for a briefing is not sufficient to, to know what's happening. And a lot of things end up happening, a lot of updates, information. Um, so putting that out there. Uh, but this time I'm supportive. Um, I want to put the platform is.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Sefeta. I recognize that we also have public comments on these items and this is an action item. Going to, before we continue with trustee comments, I, uh, I'd like to turn it over to public comment. I'd like to make, make some comments myself. And with respect to. I have a question with respect to the support of workforce, second bullet, allowing professionals to teach classes specific to their profession or skill without requiring a teaching license. Please, Mr. Shor, can you please elaborate more?
Yeah, um, Madam Vice President, trustee superintendent jar. So the, uh, the proposal, I believe it was, um, actually trustee Ford's. Recommendation. Um, and so, well, I believe, I don't want to speak for her, but, um. If memory serves, it was an effort to try to have more community support in classrooms that people, professional musicians, um, accountants. Architects could come and ensure they're still set on a class by class basis rather than having to. Be certified with a teaching license. It's hard to do so.
Thank you. I recognize that we do have a teacher shortage and the need to expand our workforce is critical. I'm definitely want to point out that I'm not in support of, um, you know, waiving at least licensing requirements. And I am in favor of evaluating or reevaluating license requirements for professionals, but our educators spend too much time. Developing those credentials and they need to be honored and respected and, um. This is why I just want to share that I'm not in favor of this particular piece of the workforce. I'm going to turn it over to public comment at this time. We have, this is item 4.04. I'd love to, since we've all had a moment to there. Everyone who's had a chance, all members on the board have had a chance to share at least once. I think it's important for us to hear from members of the public. Thank you for your patience, trustees. We will definitely. Let you go back in the queue in a minute. Um, this, um, tap up. If you're still in the house, come on down. Next, Jamie Trudinsky. Come on down. And the binder is next. Ed Gonzalez is after that. And Sarah Comerl is after that. There's already four individuals that will continue with. Trustee.
Jamie Trudinsky for the record. Um, the policy is kind of my habit. I teach a media policy studies class, so. I want to make sure that my students always know what's kind of going on in state and nationwide. Um. Sixteen out of the seventeen school districts right now are on board with an initiative called Time for Twenty. Um, which would grant, um, a twenty percent raise across the board for educators, a minimum of twenty dollars an hour for all support professionals. And CCSD, we're the only one who is not on board with that. It also, um. In critical classes and core classes would put a cap on students at about twenty. Um, there's no cap size currently. Um, and some administrators certainly do abuse that. Um, one year I was in Affordable with fifty eight sophomores. Um, also with those books that were sold from two thousand and thirty. And there weren't enough. Not Jesus, I couldn't turn twelve textbooks into fifty eight. So we just didn't use them. Um, so I don't know why CCSD is not getting behind that policy. Um, I don't know why career educators got jacket once again when new teachers. Are now making the same as people who have been in the teaching career for over a decade. Um, I'm, I don't know why we're neutral or you're planning to be neutral on an audit of funds. Um, especially when it comes to entities like Teacher Health Trust. Um, there's still a lot of money hanging from there and there's still a lot of charges being perked. By the Teacher Health Trust and their inability to cover their dues and people are still being dropped and everyone's just like, oh no, that money went away. Bye. Um, where did it go? Like it didn't disappear. Like that's not how money works. Um, so. I don't know how I feel about bill draft, um, three eighty six, the governing bodies of certain educational entities. Um, I believe in free and fair elections, but I think sometimes that gets us crap. I mean. We have trustees who pal around this neo-Nazis and that seems to be okay. Um, but then other trustees kind of get called out for. You know, leaving a work session a little bit early. Um, so there, there doesn't seem to be a clear target there. It seems like it's going to move. Um, and I think that's probably going to hurt the wrong people and the people asking the right questions. Um, it's really easy to silence a lot of people. I know because it's dry.
Thank you. Anna Binder. Ed Gonzalez.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, members of the board, superintendent jar. Once again, egg and balls for the record. Um, the reason I wanted to speak on this item is we heard in the economic forum, there's an extra billion dollars coming in and as you can tell with inflation going up and education funding. You know, having sales tax, a gaming tax, things of that nature with, you know. When goods go up, obviously there's more sales tax from it. But to me, I want to actually focus on something minor. I know it was mentioned, um, about testing. And the test that teachers do, I know, I believe it was in the twenty nineteen session, we did a study on it, but we piggybacked something. But I think it was Senator Woodhouse's bill was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that was allocated to it. But he piggybacked on another study, so it didn't really do the job that we're talking about. And what they realized is they said, we need to do more assessment on the assessment to see if we have, we have too many assessments, which was probably the most ridiculous thing that it came up with. So I think that there's a billion dollars and I'm not going to get into some of the funding issues. That's something we'll wait for from the government budget. But I think there's two things that this body could add into the legislative agenda. One is an actual study for that with some significant amount of money, even if it's a couple of hundred thousand dollars to see what tests are working and what tests aren't. But then second is actually more toward the central office, which is, what are the reports that they do that get such the same where they're pretty much needless? And what I mean by that is that we all know there's many reports that get developed and, I mean, we got agendas that are like this and we got reports that are twice. You know what's reading them. And we'll be honest, it's some report probably from ten or fifteen years ago that somebody put into some language. The legislature is no longer around, probably not even in the state. And what's going on with that? So I think that's important because look, we want people to be focused on student achievement. And that doesn't mean people the central office and the worst thing we could have them do would be buried in reports that no one's reading that has no use whatsoever. So I don't know what those are, but it'd be good to look at that as well. So Madam Vice President, I know I got another minute, but I'm not going to take it. So thank you.
Sarah Comerl?
Sarah Comerl for the record. Um, I actually didn't plan to talk on this one, but something that was said earlier was talking about how we were waiting for. Uh, the state to approve, um, curriculum and approve books and stuff like that. And I think, um. Uh, Jamie kind of touched on it a little bit, so I was going to bring up the same thing. The last event in the US history, the current US history, uh, book for Clark County School Districts that is approved is nine eleven. And I just think that these kids, like recently, it was shocking to me at how old I am, but I said, do you remember where you were on nine eleven? And they were like, not born. Oh, okay. Well, let's just throw this book away. Um, but I think it's really important that that might be something that we should be talking about, right? Is that if we're waiting on the state, even if it's the state board of education. We should maybe be talking to the legislative session about putting something where maybe they need to move their butt a little bit, right? We have things to do. Waiting twenty plus years for a new textbook is absurd. Um, and then, uh. Kind of mimicking Jamie. I wonder if people think we're the same person. Um, but the, the time for twenty thing, yes, optimism. There was something else here, something, hold on. Oh. Um, why is there nothing about special education on here? And, and I know that I sound broken record because that's all I seem to talk about. I think it's really, really important. And I think that you should too. And I think that the legislature should be aware, like this is a really big playing card for you guys in terms of funding. Because they are not funding us appropriately enough to be able to have the staff we need. To meet IEP requirements. So IDA is a law, a federal law that says that these students get what they need. Right? And their IEPs outline what they need. And the amount of times that I have been told that my children cannot have the things in their IEPs because. I'm just booked up. I have an overflow of cases. I don't have time. That doesn't drive their IEP and what they get. And so you guys should be telling the state that they are not giving you enough money to pay for things that are federally required by law. And I don't understand why that's not on this. So just some food for that. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Anna Binder.
Anna Binder for the record again, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, superintendent jar. I'm gonna not let that go because, um, some may know or not, but I am a parental member. Of our Nevada Department of Education, Special Education Advisory Committee, say that five times real fast. Um. And the extensive meetings that I've had with them in this past year, do you want to know what they prioritize coming to the legislative session? Um, something that the state was told they were out of complaints and back in twenty nineteen. And it took a parent putting the memo in front of their face to go, oh, we never saw that. They're bringing that forward. But the other thing is, um. Revising language and Nevada revised statutes to change the word, um, special needs to special abilities. If that tells you the level of the depth of that stuff. And so to piggyback on, um, what she just said. Um, I'm sure many of you by now have seen the Department of Justice's investigative, um, report regarding the. Unlawful institu- institutionalization of our mental behavioral health children in this state. And I, Nevada is not alone. We should all know that. This is a, uh. Kind of worldwide issue. Um. But the team that assisted our community in that investigation and those findings are now coming back and meeting with us. Because at the time they were opening that investigation, there were many parents in the community that attended that meeting. That literally begged the feds to get involved in this and we are coming to a critical mass. If you guys are not looking at your data, it tells you. We are not doing it and it's federal law. Nobody in our legislature, this board, any lawyer you want to hire can supersede federal law in what our children are entitled to. And tonight you're going to meet Mr. Anderson. His son has been on an IEP in this district all twelve years of his career. They only assessed him one time in kindergarten and he's a senior. One assessment in twelve years. And how can you be upset at his current IEP team? Because this is a twelve year failure, not a one year failure. This is a system failure. So would you like me to go down the causes of action this family has against this district for failing to provide a free and appropriate education for his son? Twelve years. If, if I found one. What do I say all the time, guys? If I find one, I find two. How many more are out there that don't come forward because they're told they can't get services?
Thank you, trustees, for your patience. And for listening to public comments, I'm going to turn it over to trustee. Just with the lessons. Go on in one moment, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Uh, I wanted to just check in real quick. I'm going to try to make this really fast because I'm watching the faces. I'm looking at the faces of the students that have been hanging in there. For quite some time, they no longer have priority to speak at the beginning. They do have seats, but they don't have priority to speak. So I'm trying to make this fast. I know you've been hanging in there. Um, following, uh, the precedent set by, uh, trustee Brooks, I want to check in first with board council. This is not like a nosed in town. I'm already getting questions that we want to add something to this. This is not something where we have to start all over, correct? We can, we can add things to it. Correct? Okay. All right. Just wanted to clarify that. So, um. Listening to these concerns, I believe that there was something originally, but I honestly do not remember the exact thing or who brought it up, but it did have to do with special ed. If we did want to add something having to do with federal requirements would be you and this head that we would like to welcome here to our first official meeting here. Um, would that be you guys that would put that together? We're putting the wording together.
Yeah, Madam Vice President, members of the board, um, yes, we will also. Add and actually that's part of our conversation that we have with our credit allegation, our legislative platform as well.
So we could add something again.
To this doc, this is our document. This is not reported, sent to the state. This is our document for, for, for government relations scheme to.
Editable as, I don't think you're not edible, but it's able to be edited. I'm tired, but we could go ahead and maybe ask our team to put something together. I'd like to make that request right now.
Well, right now I'm the dice.
Uh, how did we do it with trustee Brooks's request? How did you do the work at?
Blessus, if you want to put yourself under the queue after.
Yes, I will put myself back in queue. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. trustee Ford.
Thank you. I want to expand on the item about workforce and, uh, which was my suggestion and, uh. The concept of our industry professionals being able to teach in schools without having a full teaching license. Um, they would clearly have to have the same credentials as like our substitutes, but, um. Initially, I was thinking that it would be for, um. Okay, so actually this comes from a session that trustee Sepeda and I were the trustees of in twenty nineteen where we go deep into. Uh, workforce and what is needed. And so what I learned from a lot of our CTE staff and Mike Barton was there and Kerry Lerner, who was, uh. At that time is the director of CTE. What we learned from a lot of experts was that there are so many industry professionals who are like, I'll come to help your kids learn this, you know, medical. Engineering, photography, just any, anything, but they don't want to quit their jobs and become teachers. They don't want to give up their high paying career that they're doing. But they're happy to maybe come teach one day a week or at class or an hour or whatever that is. So if there was a way to. Uh, and it could even be in support of our current teachers. You know, my son is in engineering, um, he does cybersecurity. The teachers are brilliant, but they are working in schools. They're not keeping up with the newest trends. And there's even sometimes that my, my son has gone and like researched something and brought it back for the teacher to help the students. We should have ways that we're connecting even our professionals, our teachers with, uh, industry professionals and giving our kids. Uh, the best, you know, information possible. Then I started thinking, okay, what about like elementary school? And with our teacher crisis, what if somebody, let's say a artist could come in and be the art teacher and that would free up a certified teacher? And that would free up a certified teacher to be able to be in classrooms. How would that look? Could that help our teacher shortage? So that was the concept. And I I highly think that that's, we have so many people here, we have so many resources, and we just have to be able to let people help our kids without having to be in the union and having to follow all of CCSC's rules uh and make sure that our kids are, have, weren't adult. But we we know, especially from our CTAs, that when kids go to a school where they know that that lesson is going to benefit them in the future, they're more apt to not fight, they're more apt to show up, and they're gonna try harder on their tests. So this kind of thing also, I believe, can impact the district and help test scores and chronic absenteeism across the board. So I hope that somebody um really looks at that and that we have support for that. Um, and I actually would support if somebody wants to make a motion um putting the audits in the support list. It seems like at least half the board, maybe a majority would support that being in the support side of our document. Oh, and one last thing. When the trustees were coming up with items to bring forward as possible bills, IEPs like stood out. And I deeply thought about it, and I could not get to a thing, a single thing that we could ask for to be a bill that wasn't an unfunded mandate. Um, now that I've thought about it a little bit more, maybe it's something like we bring in our, you know, college students and allow them to maybe do some IEPs or something for our students. Something innovative. I don't know what that is, but I'm completely in agreeance uh with the public and the intense need to make some major changes uh for our students, for our IEP and five oh four students. And I'm good right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ford. Trustee Ford, I heard you say that under the that bullet point, allowing professionals to teach specific classes uh based on their profession or skill, you uh are not necessarily saying that they don't have a license, but however that they're eligible for substitute teaching, that have the credentials. Uh, I want to actually, thank you for that, it's uh for that clarity. I want to seek additional clarity from superintendent. Uh, we currently, can a, can a professional from any, with any specific skill um uh apply to be a substitute in our district? What what do they need in order to um to teach? Uh, let me one moment, Dr. Jarra. Dr. Jarra.
Madam Vice President, Madam Boarder, uh, all they need is to have a high school diploma. There are some requirements to be exact. I don't obviously apply for a licensure. They all have to apply for a licensure at the state. Um. What I'm hearing um from trustee Ford is something that we started to do with uh actually Commissioner Kirkpatrick in middle school with industry um at after school. Because the challenge as a, as a high school principal is to have uh an adult to come in for one period for one day and not have this involved consistently. Um, for a building master's degree will be problematic. Um, so what we were looking at was um after-school programs and supporting those for our, our young people to get.
Thank you for that clarity. I think this uh item could benefit from having additional clarity, whether we're specifically saying that it has uh information or uh whether we're specifically saying individuals can apply for substitute license or encouraging them or. Oh, yeah, thank, let me one moment, trusty Ford, here we go.
Thank you. So I'm not saying that they would come in as substitutes. They wouldn't want to do a full day of substituting. They wouldn't want to handle all the classes. Uh, they also wouldn't come in as after-school. And it also wouldn't be at a whim like substitutes. It would be a position created. They would be able to work, let's say, every Monday, all day. Or Tuesdays and Fridays, nine to twelve, or whatever it was that school needed for that position. It's gonna create, it's gonna need some flexibility, creativity, innovation to work through. Clearly, it doesn't exist yet, but it's, it looks like our platform, it's like we knew that it would need to be worked out. And so that if anyone brings an item like that forward and wants to work out those details, that we would then be in support of that concept.
If you trusty Ford, I'm gonna move on to trustee Brooks. Lucy Spencer, too.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to move us forward by uh lumping this into sections similar to how we've done other things. And um I am gonna add a couple more points to see where this lands. So under student learning, I am going to move to approve those two items, but I'm gonna ask that we add two additional items. One item is examining student assessments in more detail, more depth. Can word that better. And another one is um exploring uh removing unnecessary tasks for districts, um schools or classrooms, including um reporting that is frequently unused. You can word that nice.
Thank you, trustee Brooks. Do we have a second? Trustee Williams.
Just so I'm clear, we're just voting on the student learning portion. No, that is correct, and I will say.
Thank you, trustees. We have a motion from you, we have a trustee, a motion from trustee Brooks. Forgive me. If we have a motion for trustee Brooks, a second by trustee Williams on the student learning section. As is uh with the current bullet points and adding two additional ones, assessing student assessment and removing unnecessary tasks. What would you like clarified, trustee Gossis? Uh, let me one moment, let me turn on your notebook. Go ahead. Uh, could trustee Brooks, please, uh, repeat, I think, well, it was your second one, having to do, are you speaking about the special needs assessments? Or could we be more specific? I I just didn't catch it. I apologize. All right, Jessica, let's just trust you, folks.
The motion was about um examining student assessment and then standardized tests given to students.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any additional questions, trustee Tavassos?
Uh, none of that. Thank you. Thank you. So we have an active motion on the floor. Trustees at this time, I'd like for you to cast your vote. Trustee Sepeda.
I.
That motion passes six to zero, noting trustee is not, is not present. Let's move on to workforce. Are there any motions for workforce?
Trustee Tavassos. Um, I just want to clarify, since we're chunking this again, does this mean that if we wanted to add the item having to do with special needs, we have to do it within this chunking process instead of just asking for an individual item? That's gorgeous. Okay, we'll figure out how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, let's see, trustee Williams, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just gonna make a motion to move to approve the workforce section, just the two items.
Thank you. We have a second. Trustee Brooks.
I will second the motion.
And because we have a motion by trustee Williams, a second by trustee Brooks. I'd like to, um, trustees, please cast your vote at this time. Trustee Sepeda.
I.
Thank you. Motion passes six to zero. Moving on, trustees. Looking for a motion on mental health, health and school safety. See trustee Williams.
Thank you. I'd actually like to edit this. I'd like to update um this. I'd like to move sex education into the neutral position or take it out completely. I still don't think, even though this is an internal document, I don't think that the school district should be taking a stance on this piece of legislation if it happens to pop up. And it is what it is, but at that point, it's not, we've already gone through this with our VDRs, and I don't think that's right. So I would like to make a motion to approve mental health and school safety with the edit of removing the updated sex education status room instruction to opt out rather than.
Look you for a second. Trustee Ford.
I do not have a second.
Thank you for that. Are there any additions?
Oh, I have a motion to make to like to approve the mental health, health and school safety section as is.
Thank you, trustee Ford. Trustee Tavassos.
Yes, I would like to uh second trustee Ford's motion, please, as is, uh, as she just stated.
Thank you, trustees. We have a motion by trustee Ford and a second by trustee Tavassos. At this time, trustees, please pass your vote. Trustee Sepeda.
I.
My motion passes five to one to, after one. Noting trustee was one is not present. Thank you, trustees. Moving on to the neutral section. Looking for a motion there, trustee Brooks.
Thank you. I'm gonna try to summarize some other points that I've heard from the other board members. I'd actually like to create a new section called um governance and transparency. And I would like to move the audits. It would be under support. I would like to move the audit of CCSD finances, including S R funds. I'd also like to add the bullet points for building state infrastructure and specifically N D E as well as auditing other education-related entities, so other school districts, the State Department of Education. I would like all of that in one.
Thank you, trustee Brooks. Looking for a second, trustee Ford.
Um, I might second with some clarification, the one that we already have, the audit of UCSD finances, including S R funds. Would that still be its own bullet point, or would that be included for everyone?
Trustee Brooks. That's a good point. I think that maybe just audit in general, maybe don't call ourselves out, but we'll support the audit of anyone because we believe in transparency. We don't have to hide.
I would support leaving this as is because um I think that we're the only ones really with a lot of pressure on us to be audited truthfully, but that everybody should be, and so it should still remain separate.
Okay, so it sounds like you're not a second. Um, I would like them all together, please.
Just confirm, trustee Ford, that's not a second.
No, I think it takes away the point of what people are wanting to do.
Thank you, trustee Ford. Trustee Williams. We have, we have a motion by trustee of Brooks, a second by trustee Williams. Trustees, please pass your votes. Trustee Sepeda.
I.
That motion passes four to two. Noting trustee Bruce. Mister, we can hear you up here. Thank you so much. Thank you for keeping your comments to yourself while we're conducting business. That motion passes. Moving on. Uh, so we have, uh, looking for a motion for the following section. Maybe we do, maybe we don't, trustee Williams.
Are we on the opposed?
That's correct. I'd like to sit in awkward silence, so I will sit there. All right, trustee Ford.
Uh, I don't have a second. I wanted to ask if we're able to bring up the first one again or not.
Give us a little bit more, trustee Ford, the first one.
The first section of uh student, student learning.
Oh, uh, I think we're seeking legal counsel, whether we can reopen the uh, the item we just voted on.
I think we could vote on more to be added in. If not, any other items, go back.
Thank you, Ms. Valach. So I'm hearing trustee Ford would like to reopen or just the revisit. So go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'd actually um something like um push for additional funding to provide federally required services, supports and minutes to um I for IEP students and five oh four students. And I think I would like uh trustee Cabas's opinion on that, because I feel like she had an idea already before I sent my other.
Thank you, trustee Ford. I'm gonna turn it over to trustee Tavassos.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Chair. Um, I had basically was going to ask for about the same thing. I had just put together something that was kind of broad. I know Mr. Story's gonna look at me like that's not specific enough, but I was going to say, I would like an item added that stipulates that we are meeting all federal regulations regarding our special needs students in regard to IEP assessments. I don't know if that is worded correctly. It was the best I could do in like about two minutes, so.
Could you please repeat that? Trustee Tavassos, there. Could you please repeat your motion or your request? Yes.
I would like an item added. I believe that it would probably come under student learning. I was not aware. I don't think any of us were aware that our methodology was going to be that we were going to chunk it, so I wasn't prepared for that. So it would be, I would like an item added that stipulates that we are, that we are meeting all federal regulations regarding our special needs students in regard to IEP assessments.
Forgive me, trustee Ford, if I see you in the queue, I'd love to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I am supportive of that language. I just think it's important that we add uh at the beginning, funding for. Otherwise, it's gonna be an unfunded mandate.
Exactly. That's kind of understood with me, funding, so we could add that.
And we can get more specific later on. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. So do you want to go ahead and make the motion or to add it? I want to make sure it's known.
It sounded like a friendly amendment. Trustee Ford's on friendly amendments.
Okay, yeah, I just said it um, funding or anything federally required, services, support, minutes.
I would be fine with the friendly amendment.
Then I think is that good enough for you guys to do? Okay, thank you.
Are we clear on what we're voting on? And my colleagues. Uh, I think I'm speaking to, or thank you for my colleague. Are there any additional questions? So trustee Brooks in the queue.
Uh, there's a motion. I would be supportive of um a motion that said something like ensuring state support students that require individual educational plan, um, something like that, but I don't, I don't think I could support that. There's not a clarity in this statement for me. So if you want to repeat it and clarify, I'll try to get on board, but I'm not quite there.
Thank you, trustee Brooks. Trustee Ford.
It's as clear as a lot of the items in here already. And I'll save mine was additional funding to be able to provide federally required services, supports and minutes for IEP and five oh four students. And then whatever else language is now on the record and it's that I believe uh Mr. Story misses the ad. Our attorneys can go and figure that out.
I'm loving one moment, please. Trustee Brooks, what additional, that helped with clarity?
I don't think it's up to our staff to figure it out. Um, the board is supposed to come to a.
They wrote the whole thing originally.
Right, and I I gave them very specifically. I feel like they were, would be able to follow the instructions I gave them and.
I think you reworded what trustee Cabas was, and I said originally, and that it was pretty clear. And we got nods from everybody that it was good to go before you made your.
Ford, I think if, uh, there's a point to seek additional clarity.
Well, when I hear you don't let me.
I'm trying to help you.
I'm I'm good. I said it three times. I don't need any more help, but I appreciate it.
What I'm understanding this motion is to add an additional bullet item to the already existing bullet points plus um the ones that we've already agreed to earlier. And specifically to provide, asking the state to provide additional funding to support IEP students to have IEP needs. You know, okay, this is why I was seeking clarity. So trustee Tavassos, you want to go ahead? Yes, you were a close, Madam Vice Chair, and I think that we can clear this up pretty quickly. And basically, the only thing that was changed by trustee Ford's friendly amendment was just to be sure that we said asking for additional funding and stipulating that we would be meeting all federal regulations regarding our special needs students in regard to IEP assessment. And with that, I'd like you to call for the vote. Call the question.
Okay, is there a second to the call question? Trustee Ford.
Yeah, second, call a question.
Sorry, is that, you're second?
I second that.
Excellent. Thank you, all right, trustees. The call. Excellent. Thank you, our trustees. The call, the question essentially ends debates and requires us to vote. I'd like to this time ask trustees to pass their ballot to the vote. To call the question trustee Sabella.
May.
That vote passes five to one noting trustee this one is not present. Okay, so that does end our debate and requires us to vote on the motion.
We're gonna go on, not helping.
Okay, thank you so much for at this point in time, request trustee's vote on their my for the motion on the table.
Can I have and I apologize for not being here, like being there in person. I do not feel well. But I guess I have a question about the language and more for counsel. Because it sounded like I guess I'm asking that the language not put us in a legal, any legal liability. And I'm just asking that the language that we provide will put us won't I guess, yeah, won't put us in a legally questionable place.
Trust, thank you, trustee Sabella. I think it sounds like we have some questions for you. Council has questions for you.
I couldn't hear you.
I said, in what regard?
Uh, so it, I feel like it's making the intonation that we're not following federal guidelines or at least willfully not doing so. And I don't think any principal is up or teacher is out there locally, but not wanting to follow the law. I'm supportive of seeking additional funds for students. I just want to make sure that language isn't saying that we're not following the law.
I don't know that that's going to be an issue because I think your fellow colleagues that are on the day as right now are confused really as to that, but I, I know, but I, I think that there, there are trustees on the day as far as this is I think we've got to go to the vote at this point.
Thank you. So yes, we have to, we've already called a vote. We've ended debates now this time trustees are I would, I've asked all trustees to vote. Just like the last, are you casting your, your vote? I forgive me. There is no more discussion at this time. We are voting on what some members have some members have already this mortgage board of motions. That is what we are voting on. There is a limited clarity that exists. And so we are, thank you trustee Ford for that language. We are going to move forward because our question has been called. We are now moving forward with the vote. So trustee Cabas, thank you so much for casting your vote. Trustee Sabella.
It's difficult because I don't, I I, I will say, yeah, I'm supportive of funding students. I still don't know about this language.
This, I'm trustee, we, we need your we need your votes in
I said, yeah, I said, yeah, because I still don't understand fully the language and the clarity.
Can we go back, please, to the vote tally? Thank you, trustee. I know Tech is working on getting this. Thank you so much. So motion fails. I'd like, that is three to three to three noting just because one is not present. It looks like there are some trustees in the queue who may want to, don't forgive me, Dr. Durham, do you have a like to add? Go ahead.
I do matter by the way, the president, members of the board, I, I think for more of me listening, I think we all support additional funding, but that's one of the reasons I apologize for churning it, but what is, what are we going to write? I think that's what we need for clarity of the motion so we can write it. When I motion to our chief of comms and government relations. When we come back, we want to make sure that we have the exact language. That's what I would ask. So then there's clarity in, in what we are going to put in the legislative platform from this board. So it's, it's the appropriate language. So we need clarity because we don't want to then come back and have this conversation again on the 27th when we break in another final day.
Thank you, Dr. Durham. Let's take a try this motion again. My motion is to, and the support, support understudy and services students. Student learning, excuse me, understudy and learning of additional bullet points, which is what currently exists and what we voted on earlier. To ensure adequate funding of students with special special needs. Special abilities. Again, my motion on the floor. It is in support of ensuring adequate funding for students highest need. I think I need to flush that language out, but I have something along those lines.
If I'm in my
trustee Brooks is in the queue. Go ahead, trustee Brooks.
Thank you. I am supportive of a new motion and it's the maker of the motion will be amenable to this language. It would be additional support, additional state level support, including funding for students with IEP.
Thank you. I actually would like for you to make that motion. I'm happy.
Okay. So I'd like to add a bullet point under student learning for, under support for additional state level support, including funding for students with IEPs.
I'd like to second that motion. Trustees, we have a motion on the floor. We also have trustees in the queues, trustee Ford.
I just want to say thank you so much for being able to bring that item forward. And I'm sure we'll hear all about it in the press release that comes after this meeting. Thank you, trustee Brooks, trustee Garcia Morales, for your courage on this. Truly, it's appreciated. Trustee Cabas.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I know that there has already been a motion made as second, but one of the primary things was left out and that was meeting all federal regulations. Was that included? Did we repeat that? I'm just asking for clarification.
Go ahead, trustee Brooks.
Any thing that we put in this is substantially lower than federal guidelines than my motion stands. Thank you.
I'm not sure I understand that. It's substantially under not having to meet federal guidelines.
Regardless of what we put in this paper, where we're tighter to legally meet federal guideline.
We are already required to meet federal guidelines. We're just not doing so. And I do not want to say, I want, I want to I just want to say that, you know, you know, the boss is forgive me, I'm not going to entertain that behavior from the audience. I'm not either. Thank you. I appreciate it. Right. I just want to make I just want to make sure that we know that nothing is being willfully done wrong. And I do appreciate the presence of her bringing that up as far as about the liability, but I don't think that anything is willfully being done wrong. It's just not being done. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Trustees at this time. Before we move forward, I'd like to give trustee a better opportunity to ask the questions, okay?
It's okay, I understand.
Thank you. Right, trustees, at this time, I'd like for you to trustees, at this time, I'd like for you to pass your vote, please. Trustee Sabella.
Aye.
Trustees, that motion passes six to zero noting trustee was one is not present. All right. Good work, trustees. Moving on to any moving on, any other movements? No, that's it. It looks like it is. We have not approved on the opposed. Todd, do you have?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Vice President, trustee Superintendent Jar. There is the opposed section.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate you helping us stay on track here. Trustee Brooks, go ahead.
Thank you. I moved to prove anything else that is in if there's anything else.
Thank you, trustee Brooks. I'd like to make a second. Trustees, this time, I'd like for you to please capture. Trustee Sabella.
Aye.
You know, that motion passes five to one noting trustee was one is not present. Mr. Story, Mustad, hi. Is there any do you have enough information to make edits to this document that will help you?
Yes, yes, Madam Vice President, we do. We will be able to pull this, go back to the video and make sure that we capture the language correctly. And then just as one final measure to make sure that you understand that the other EDRs that are included here is what we have projected as a September 23rd, we will continue to follow that. Those numbers are increasing finally. We anticipate that numbers will grow ever longer. But thank you for the direction tonight and we will get back to.
Thank you both for your time and your support and I look forward to continuing these conversations. Have a good evening. Trustees, good work. At this time, we're going to move on to item five 301. That's public comment on items not listed as action items on the agenda. Public comment during this portion of the agenda is offered for individuals wishing to speak on matters within the jurisdiction of the board but not listed as an action item on the agenda. Each individual wishing to speak during the period will be given three minutes to address the board. The public should be aware that the board is unable by law to deliberate and not and in an effort to be fair and consistent, board members will refrain from addressing individual complaints. We'll start with the individuals who signed up in advance. We have Amy Pritchard. Oh, forgive me, yes. Before we get started, please come on up, please come on up. But before we officially get started, I want to make sure that it makes one more announcement for yellow cards. If you have not submitted them by the moment that this, I mean, starts. We will not be included in the pool of individuals will have an opportunity to share public comment.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and welcome. My name is Amy Pritchard, for the record. Hello, I am a kindergarten teacher at Glen Taylor Elementary. Due to my husband's military orders, our family moved here in July and Glen Taylor has been a wonderful place for my children. So thank you Glen Taylor. I am here today to remind you that you are out of compliance with Nevada State Law Senate Bill 293. This is a labor law that was signed a year ago in October 2021. It is still not being followed by this district. The bill states that it is prohibited and inequitable to ask for or place any employee by their previous salary. The board and the CCEA union negotiated this inequitable practice of matching salaries in 2015, 2016 of article in article 269. An example of this practice is that if you are from California or New York, you can make thousands of tens of more than a name an Nevada native teacher or other experienced teachers that are coming from other states, not because of your credentials or because of where you are located. This is much like a time when males got paid more just because they were male. You are paying teachers by where they are from, not for their merit or their credentials. This practice that this board and the CCEA union has chosen to negotiate together has always been inequitable and discriminatory. But for a year now, it was seen unlawful by the state of Nevada in Senate Bill 293. The board and the union have had a year to correct this and have chosen to keep article 269 instead of making equitable choices for your educators. This school year, 2223, I was asked for and placed by a previous salary and not by my education and experience. I have worked in three other districts in the United States and have always been paid by my credentials. I have, I am a 10-year experience teacher. I have a master's degree and an additional 24 graduate credits. I have a teacher friend who was hired at the same school, the same month I was. She has four years less of experience than me and 24 credits left and she makes $7,000 more than me. Just because she's from a different state. I am just one story of inequitable pay, but there are hundreds of educators who are paying inequitably. I have heard other additional stories from Nevada native teachers who get paid $10,000 to $15,000 less than teachers who come with the same credentials who come from states like California or New York. This is saddening. Since July, when I realized this district wasn't going to correct their actions against me, I began to ask a lot of questions. The district and the CCA union are both very aware of this law, but unwilling to give me and employ that have violated any information on when they plan to follow this law or compensate those of us who signed unlawful contracts with this school year. The union blames the board and the district seems to blame the union for this unlawful negotiation. I have filed a grievance and was told that this law was not in the grievance jurisdiction, so it was not acknowledged. I want to assume that each of you on this board value education, value students, and therefore you should be evaluating your teachers. You have the authority and a responsibility to eliminate inequitable practices of article 269 and start being equitable and follow the labor law 20 Senate Bill 293. I look forward to watching your responsibility. Thank you.
Mr. Bayless, after Mr. Bayless, Melissa Moreno, Juanita Cole, then Connor Schreiber.
This is public comment, right off the agenda. Okay, cool. Speak freely. So obviously we've been going around and around since October, but I just would like you to know the board, you see my gentleman back there, he's streaming to the city, state, and actually market the federal buildings. So he got to watch all that great stuff today. Um, so I just want to address, since we've been talking about Fed. When are we going to address Daniel Lee Bahara and the illegal activities that he's addressed? Remember the arrest report that we didn't assess? Why is his address sitting right there? Um, that's, he's, he's the AG. Why is the AG building on a police report? That comes from a school. That's my question of the century. Why isn't Attorney General the Director of Compliance? Isn't that not a conflict of interest? And you talked about so many different, you guys are throwing funding for following the law. You're supposed to follow the law without the money. We all are. Everybody in this building has to follow the law. You guys are nobody special. And I don't understand like a lot of things, like a lot of these people, I actually loved to death, but I'm just curious, like I've been sitting on this board since October. I thought this was a trustee board, not a Lola board. It seems like whatever she says goes. And I understand she speaks for the man and man himself, but geez, it's Chris Christmas. There are a lot of things should not be be able to pass with just a straight bully charge. It's not right. The fact that my kid's been ignored since October and not one person on this board has even contacted me about nothing. That's a major issue. We're talking about Fed kids. This arrest report, this was the madam chair's school, Fremont, not even the madam chair has addressed. She was there. This was her year she was in. That was her school. Why hasn't she addressed it? She goes on camera just on 108, was talking about how she appreciates children and how they shouldn't be incarcerated, but her school incarcerated my kid. So why hasn't she addressed it? I've been up here talking about it since I got here. And she has yet to address it. So again, I see she's quick to snap at this board. I see she's quick to snap at this, um, this Williams and whoever else disagrees with her. How about she snaps on the phone and calls somebody? Have a good day.
Melissa Moreno, Juanita Cole, and Connor Schreiber. Welcome and please state your name for the record.
Melissa Moreno. On March 8th, 2022, I was hired at Christopher Elementary School as a school aide. On June 8, 2002, after three months, I was informed that I did not meet the requirements of the position that my probationary time had expired. And they had to let me go. I had been working as a temporary service worker around the elementary school since December 2017 without any problem. I have a learning disability and it is difficult for me to process a lot of information and being able to understand some procedures. Later, I reapply for food service worker position since I have experience in that area after being working there for five years. I, it was reported to me that my application had been removed from the process. I was very surprised for that time of being able to reapply for any position with the school district, considering this as a lack of discrimination since I did not do anything wrong. I am here to ask for my name to be clear from being banned and to reestablish the process of being able to apply for any position within CCEA since I did not commit any crime or do something against the law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Melissa, I just want to confirm that, I'm unsure if you're Melissa Moreno or the woman you.
Not yet.
I'm Melissa Moreno.
Okay, I believe that you were translating for the person next to you, what's the name?
No, I, I stand here because she was nervous to talk about it, and so I was just supporting her because she's talking about how she was discriminated because she is a learning disability, and then her, the way of, the way that she processed things is differently, so, because she didn't practice some instructors that were given by her, she was fired and not giving her the opportunity to reapply, sorry, I'm very emotional about that. So when, when she tried to reapply, she was told that she could not reapply and she could not know why she was fired from her position.
Thank you for, for being here tonight, thank you, Melissa. Juanita Cole. Connor Schreiber. Matt Schreiber. Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, my name is Connor Schreiber, and I am a senior at Centennial High School. I run cross-country, play volleyball, and I'm student body vice president. I spent all my high school years at Centennial, and when I think of someone who's dedicated to the school, I think of someone who's willing to be there, need to take in the thing. They work tirelessly to provide whatever means are required to help their learning environments. They help promote school spirit and events around campus, and they keep students, parents, and guardians informed of the things happening on campus. These attributes all perfectly apply to Mr. Whitman. As many of you may know by now, Mr. Whitman was assigned to other duties and is no longer the principal of Centennial High School. I have known Mr. Whitman since sixth grade when I went to eleven middle school. At the time, he was the principal, and I'm pretty sure after just a week or two, he already knew who I was. He's always trying to meet and talk to every student, but I didn't realize how lucky I was to have him as my principal because I made it to high school. Since coming to Centennial, Mr. Whitman has given the school a fresh new look, new paint and flooring. He has helped add so much improvement to all the CTE programs, and he really pushes our teachers, all of us students, learn and be the best that we can be. As vice president, I have many duties, and it involved me leading a group of people to create dances and assemblies, and it can be stressful at times, and it's on a much smaller scale than that would Mr. Whitman did. But what I love about him is that he makes it seem so important. He knows that it's important to me as well as everybody else who's student council, and knows that it's important that we make events, create weeks of pep rise, but he works tirelessly to ensure that we are all able to do them all. And he also attends every single one. He interacts with all the students, and he makes sure that everyone is having a great time, because Mr. Whitman knows that high school is more than just learning about the three branches of government, he knows that learning more about quadratic functions or chemical equations, it's about the experience, and he understands that being the principal can make or break it. I'll never forget in sixth grade, he was the principal of eleven. I was born with cystic fibrosis, and because of that, I was able to get my wish granted through the charity known as Make Wish. I found out in an assembly with all of my peers, and I still remember how amazing it was to find out that I got to get my one true wish here. And without the help of Mr. Whitman, I never would have been able to find out in such a memorable life. Mr. Whitman has forever influenced my life, and I'll never be able to thank him enough for what he has done for me, my family, and my friends. When I think of dedication, I think of Mr. Whitman. I have never met anybody more dedicated to the parents, students, and staff of CCSD, and I believe that Mr. Whitman should be reinstated as the principal of Centennial High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Matt. Matt, please state your name for the record, and we'll move on to Joe Wish. Sorry, I totally chopped that up, but you'll, you'll teach me how to say it.
My name is Matt Schreiber, and I've lived in this community for seventeen years. My son attends Centennial High School, where until recently, Keith Whitman was the principal. When the rumors started, I told my kids, you know, if something happens, CCSD would have sent an email to inform us, because they have a longstanding tradition of being transparent to the community. But weeks went by, and Principal Whitman didn't show up, and CCSD still hasn't provided any information as to why. He, his family, and the Centennial family deserve better than to have you silently stand by while he is detained. As an attorney, I understand the investigative process and the need for confidentiality. However, I also understand the promise that CCSD has made to the community for transparency. Very dramatic action has been taken by CCSD without any kind of notice to the community. Having a principal removed signals an egregious violation has occurred that required immediate action without any community input. We are here asking, in the spirit of transparency, what CCSD policy or regulation Mr. Whitman violated, and whether the years of service by him warranted such severe punishment. It appears he was removed because of a minor violation of CCSD policy. CCSD has known this specific policy has affected numerous students, but has refused to correct it, leaving Mr. Whitman and at least two other principals to take action that CCSD should have taken. Now these principals are being punished for solving the problem that CCSD refused to fix. President Cepeda, when you were selected board president, you said, if the policy isn't functioning, the board can always go back and review it and make modifications. So board presidents and Superintendent Jarrah, go back and fix this policy and then restore Principal Whitman and these other principals to their positions. Studies show that students benefit when there is a strong positive relationship between students and administrators and teachers. As you, as you are going to hear from these students, Principal Whitman has demonstrated that he can establish that relationship that is so vital to student achievement. At sporting events, the students chant, "We love Whit, we love Whit, we love Whit," when they see him. Why do they say they love their principal? They say it because they know he loves them. It's a shame what CCSD has done to him and the Centennial students. This family, the Centennial family deserves transparency and official answers as to why he was removed. A petition to restore him as principal has gathered nearly twenty-five hundred signatures in just a few days, few days. More would sign this petition if they knew the true story, but CCSD is refusing to be transparent and let the story become public. CCSD needs more people like Principal Whitman, not less of them. You should be cloning him, not firing him. Justis Brooks, shortly, you know, I got two more paragraphs I'd like to keep going.
I'm sorry, we actually thank you for your comments, however, if you'd like, if you have two more paragraphs, you're welcome to submit them for written comments, your time is up, and we have allocated that time for you already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Jill, will you come up here and teach me how to say your last name?
My name is Jill Wishengra, and I am a junior at Centennial High School, and I have been very involved in very many different things, especially sports. I have swam, ran cross-country, ran track, and golfed. And I have personally known Mr. Whitman since before kindergarten, and he has been my principal for almost the entirety of my public education, since I was homeschooled until seventh grade. I could not dream of a better principal. The love the student body has for him demonstrates how he has earned the respect of the students. When at sports games, we have our own chant, as Matt said, that we love him. He is extremely caring while also modeling the utmost professionalism. Out of respect for Mr. Whitman, we follow the rules that he has put in place to keep us safe and in a great learning environment. He has brought an amazing dual enrollment program to Centennial, allowing students to take U N R college classes. This is contributing to my ability to be able to earn my associate's degree at a very low cost by the time I turn eighteen. I, along with my fellow classmates, hate going to school every morning without him there to greet us at the doors with his wit and smile. Mr. Whitman works hard to know every student, from the most outgoing scholarly or athletic students to the more challenged and reserved students. Without him, the school feels dull, as no other administration asks us about our lives and how we are the way he does. We do not know what Mr. Whitman is accused of because you have not told us. We do not even know if he has been suspended, fired, or reassigned, and because of this, terrible rumors are circulating that we can't possibly believe to be true. He simply cannot have done anything worth what you're doing to him and to us. Please bring back our beloved principal, Mr. Whitman, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. It's Adam, Michael Stoll. Here. He's in the back. If it comes through, or we will just keep going until, if she's here, we'll let her jump in. Got Jacob Parker, Jerry Anderson, and Kingston. Evan.
All right, good evening, members of the board, my name is Jacob Parker, and I am a very passionate educator for one of our CCSD public charter schools, and I have a love for teaching that has spanned my educational career as a student here at Simmer Memorial since two thousand and four. Some of you know me, I have a bachelor's in education and a master's in higher education with an emphasis on administrative leadership. My entire college career has been focused on reforming secondary education to better serve our students and to get them college and career ready. A mantra I follow is innovation requires risk and innovation requires change, and today I see an opportunity for you, the board, to innovate, so the eyes of our district can see the successes of our pursuits rather than recurrent failures of our administration. So, let's innovate. I present to you tonight a quick framework, a new plan of action to try out and change the way that our high schools operate. If we truly wish to make students like these wonderful students back here have their passions for to be college and career ready, then let's operate that way. The framework is simple, it overhauls our entire five-day school week from a traditional secondary to a full, true college environment. Teachers will provide two full-day instructional sessions, one for a Monday, Wednesday, one for Tuesday, Thursday, and then Friday as a flex day, so you'll still have your five days available to students. Each normal class session will be seventy-five minutes for a total of up to six hours per educational day minus prep periods for a total of ten to twelve possible sessions equaling seven point five contracted hours per day for our teachers, so they still meet instructional minutes and the required hours as contracted by the bargaining agreement. This would greatly lower your class sizes and your better balance for your teachers and your students. High school students will be empowered to create a full educational schedule alongside their counseling team, now academic advisors, so they can better promote school life and personal life balance, especially for your higher grad students who are now working jobs to support their families. Teachers, we provided their time slots per session for students enrolled based on their need, and then students now have full control over their schedule. This creates intrinsic initiative and especially buy-in, because now students have control over their schedules and their ability to succeed on their own. In regard to schoolwork, that means a huge reform to our grade systems. No more minimum Fs, no more forty percent. In no real world will a student receive something for nothing, and I firmly believe that this doesn't happen in the workplace, and it sure as hell will not happen in a college environment either. We demand better from our students, but we have no rigor to support that. We need to show them that every point matters. This is just the framework, but at the end of the day, our teachers matter, our students matter, and above all, we matter, and the silent voices are the ones that speak the most. Let's give these students the opportunity to have that, thank you for your time, appreciate.
Thank you, Jerry. And then move on to Kingston. After Kingston, we'll have Zachary. Zachary. And Cameron.
Good, Kingston Ludwig, for the record. Good morning, and good evening, my name is Kingston Ludwig. I'm a freshman, I do cross-country and track, and I'm the student freshman secretary. I'm here tonight on behalf of the removal of Mr. Whitman. Not only was he the best principal in Nevada, but a great person, friend, and mentor. He has taught me many lessons and made me feel safe and happy to go to school. He cares about everyone and is always supporting your dreams and goals. To remove Whit is to take a piece of Centennial with him. We need him back, CCSD lacks communication to parents and students, and this is a problem that needs, that needs an immediate attention. Speaking on behalf of the Centennial students, we want answers of why he was escorted off campus midday. We want Whit back. Mr. Whitman is a born leader and is the best principal Centennial has ever had. If anything, you guys should be hiring him to teach you how to connect with students and be an advocate for us. This is an example of CCSD doing the wrong thing again. We want answers, we want Whit back, and on behalf of some students from Centennial, bring back Whit.
One, Zachary. And Cameron. Cameron and Ally.
Good afternoon, board members and Superintendent Jarrah, thank you for having us here to talk about our concern for our principal. I ended up writing a long talk, but I think Mr. Schreiber's talk needs to be finished. I'm going to finish it for him. Justis Brooks, shortly after, before you're reelected, you tweeted, "This election is about providing stability for the students and families we serve." Parents want that stability for their kids, students need this ability to achieve their potential. How does firing Principal Whitman provide stability to the students and families of Centennial? It doesn't. These students are uncertain, confused, and don't understand why the principal they love was taken from them with no explanation given and no transparency provided. This decision was not made in harmony with anything that CCSD has promoted. Superintendent Jarrah, in your state of the school's address this year, you said, "It's been years of declining expectations, years of lack of involvement, and years of neglect, and who bears this responsibility, every single one of us? We all lose, and we can all fix it." Superintendent Jarrah, I know one person that doesn't bear any responsibility for their problems you mentioned. Principal Whitman, he's raised expectations, he's involved, he loves his students, but your decision has made the Centennial family lose, and only you can fix it. Last year, the board reconsidered a personal decision that directly impacted your employment, so there's precedent for you to reconsider these types of personal decisions. The Centennial family implores you to reconsider your decision to restore Whitman to his position, to his position, because we love Whit, we love Whit. And I'm going to finish reading with what I have got. So I'm currently a part of student council, I'm our senior class treasurer, and I'm very involved with a lot of things that we have going on this senior year. And Whitman really does care about our school and students and our well-being at our school. He's done a lot to our school, whether it's paving outside, fixing up our turf, our track, and, you know, I'm the customer here on the team, so that, that does a lot for me. He even went ahead to buy a ten thousand dollar mascot suit for those of the students who will be in that from now on, because our tenure one, you know, sunk. He also did a lot for our school, whether it's sports, grades, everything, he's always there to help us, tutor us, teach us. He was previously a teacher, so we know that we can go to him for help. It's wrong to leave us in the dark like this, there's rumors that spread all around our school because of this, because no one knows what's actually happening. It's caused mass hysteria throughout our school, and it's worrying, the students and families of Centennial High School deserve to know exactly what's going on. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak, and I'd like to say wholeheartedly, bring Whit back, bring Whit back.
Thank you. And Cameron, looks, too far at the end, I don't know if that's.
It's, it's. My handwriting is not good.
I also struggle to read. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Cameron Hyde, for the record. I'm currently a senior at Centennial High School, unlike most of you who are not in student council, but I am an athlete, I do tennis and golf, whatever sport, honestly. And when I think of Mr. Whitman, a few words come to mind. Friendly, devoted, invested, caring, kind, and welcoming, as well as trustworthy and amazing, just an amazing person. I had the great opportunity to have him as my principal at Widdow Middle School and Centennial High School, and he's been nothing short of the best. He cares about students so much, and he cares about this school district. He gives countless hours through this job, I see him greet students every morning, come to sporting events, see performance. He gives countless hours through this job. I see him greet students every morning, come to sporting events, see performances, come to banquets, and even come to classrooms and lunch all the time. Things in my life that are done, that are only done by him. Because my past administrators, I hardly knew them. They hardly gave time to the students like principals I've had in the past and other administrators. To me, I only know him from his wonderful traits, which is why me and countless other parents, students, and staff have shared their voices and concerns to the district, news, or each other. All we want is answers and reasons as to why such a good man who has done so monumental in so many students' education and journey would deserve such a thing as being removed from his position. I didn't notice how much his presence really affects us at Centennial until he was gone. It felt like there was a big hole in my heart. I miss greeting him in the mornings. We miss seeing him at football games and chanting his name, Whip, Whip, Whip. We love him. So please just give us answers, answers to why this could happen, answering parents' emails and concerns, and students wondering where did our awesome principal go. I hope you take some of our concerns to heart today, and thank you.
Thank you. Down, and then with that, Jamie Kudinsky, Victoria Jones.
My name is Ellie Haywood, and I'm Centennial High School Student Body President this year. I am here today to address the issue we as students are having in our school. We are without a principal. He's not just any principal to us, though. He's our mentor. He's our friend, and he's our biggest supporter. Mr. Whipperman has been away from the campus for over two weeks with no explanation to our parents, our students, or our faculty. The most extensive that we've gotten is that he's been reassigned to other duties. Whipperman is a face that students notice when he is not here. Our campus has not felt the same sense. Students love Whipperman and enjoy coming to school for the interactions that he has with them. The students of Centennial High School deserve better. We deserve to be informed and know the conflicts occurring in our school. Mr. Whipperman brings a light to our school that nobody else can, and we cannot replace that. We as students deserve to know what is going on. We are directly affected by this absence. As we walk into the school in the morning, we are not greeted by his kind and smiling face. We notice the difference he makes in our school. The interactions he has with our students, including me, are amazing. He makes every single student feel appreciated and heard. I've never seen someone so dedicated to knowing every student, each and individually and personally. Personally, I have the opportunity to work directly with Mr. Whipperman as student body president. I have learned so much about caring about every single student and advocating for them. That's why I'm here today. I am advocating for three thousand students. We want Whipperman back. What is occurring is tarnishing Mr. Whipperman's reputation. We miss him, and as students deserve to know what's happening on our campus. So I ask you, please help us understand what's going on. Please help us to fix whatever is going on. We love Whipperman. We want him back on our campus, and he has done so much for us, and we just care so much about him. Thank you.
Victoria Jones, Sarah Comro, and then Anna Binder.
You actually, I mean, I saw a photo that was just hard in well before that group, the name Jeremy Anderson. And he said his name was Jeremy, and then he got his place, and then he called another Jerry, and then...
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. I'm gonna add him right after this mix. Thank you, thank you.
So for the last time, I'm gonna let it go. Thank you for speaking about this today, Cameron. I appreciate that.
You guys are awesome.
I also want to acknowledge Laura.
You guys need to record that.
She was also a finalist, and I got a teacher of the year, so I want to put that on record because she is an amazing educator and a lot for the district. So I'm here to talk about teachers' health trust. What? It's crazy. It's still bad. So I'm still diabetic. That's not gonna go away unless anyone has a spare pancreas. Pass my way, that'd be cool. But until that happens, I would like my medicine, like, covered. Because I basically live under my desk at my school, so like, I would like my contractually required healthcare to be decent. Because yet another medicine has been denied by teachers' health trust. And then like my fun little Dexcom meeting that makes me look like a cyborg. It now costs thirty dollars to scan it at the doctor's office every single time I go. And I didn't know that until I got a bill that said, "Hey, UOS ninety dollars." And I said, "No, I paid out my stuff." And they're like, "Oh, yeah, your insurance doesn't cover this anymore." And I find out because I get a bill. And I have an awesome doctor's office who knows that THT is garbage, and they take care of a lot of teachers, right? Because he can afford to, right? His clinic is large enough that he can afford to let teachers slide for a while. Not a lot of clinics and offices will do that, so we're still losing a lot of medical care. With, if I don't have insulin, I die. Right? And I know for some people that would be quite convenient because I've had people from CCA tell me that if I died, I would finally be quiet. That was the first time I came and talked to the board years ago. And in the eight years I've been here, it's never been good. And in the eight years I've been here, I've always needed insulin. I'm always going to need it. But you have teachers who are leaving this district because there is not adequate healthcare. There is no reason it should be billed for thirty dollars to scan a medical device that takes twenty seconds. There's no reason for me to be denied insulin because there's one that's two dollars cheaper when my doctors and myself, we know my medical routine and we know what I need. You're losing teachers for so many reasons. I don't understand why the admin get good insurance. Our police, our firefighters, they get good insurance, but teachers, we get treated like we're trash time and time and time again.
Jeremy Anderson. And Victoria Jones, and then Sarah.
My name is Jeremy Anderson. In late August, my son was, my son William, he has Down Syndrome. He's seventeen years old. He was assaulted in a bathroom while he was unattended. Not only was he sexually assaulted in the bathroom stall in the closed bathroom stall, but it was videoed by five students and spread through the internet. I sat in last meeting to the grading system for our superintendents and the metric being used to give him the A grades that we got. And I look at you, and I right now, you're failing. You failed my son. You failed my family. And when I hear things debates whether we should be federally compliant, I'm disgusted as a CCSD student and a graduate during high school. I wanna throw up every time that I drop my sign off in school. I have not slept through the night since it happened. And I don't think anybody understands what my, me and my family have gone through with this. Because my phone calls have gone unanswered. When I spoke with law enforcement and asked to press charges, I was informed in writing that no laws had been broken. When I spoke with Mr. Bozaker, he also informed me that he was unsure if any laws had been broken. If we're unsure that filming over top of a closed bathroom stall is illegal, we have way bigger problems than any of you can even comprehend. You should all be taking the picture because this is where we're at.
Victoria, please, Mr. Anderson, Victoria Jones. Victoria Jones, Sarah Comro. And Anna Binder.
I'll get her.
And then Hannah Comro.
Sarah Comro, for the record. In secondary education, there are a handful of placements for special education. This is determined by the IEP team for each individual student. The highest levels of support are provided in a self-contained classroom. The lowest levels of support are provided in a completely general education classroom. And in the middle, you have resource and CC or CO-TOP. In the case of resource and CC, a student will have minutes set aside in their IEP where they get specific support for that content area. For example, if a student has ninety minutes per week in ELA, they might end up in a resource English class. This class will have a maximum of sixteen students and be taught by a special education teacher that specializes in ELA. This provides a much lower student-to-teacher ratio of sixteen to one at most compared to that of a fully general education classroom, which might have forty-plus students, giving it a forty-plus to one ratio of students to teacher. CC classes are supposed to sit as a similar or equivalent to resource. You will usually find English and math resource classes and social studies and science CC classes. The way a CC class works is that it has two rosters. One is for Gen Ed students who still may have IEPs but don't have minutes specified for that content area. And the other is for students with IEPs that have minutes for that content area. CC classes also have two teachers, one that specializes in the content area, like social studies teacher, and one special education teacher. Since CC is supposed to be on par with resource, it would make sense that the ratio would be similar. To get a sixteen-to-one ratio, it would be sixteen kids on each roster, CC and Gen Ed, and then two teachers. However, according to SFD and CCSD Central Office, there is no policy regarding the size or makeup of a CC class. It can have forty-five kids and twenty of them can be on the CC roster. It can have sixty kids and twenty of them can be on the CC roster. I could come up with examples all day, and these are not frivolous random examples. These are real-life examples happening in CCSD classes across the district. How does this serve these students? How does this support student achievement for all of the kids in these classrooms? How does this meet federal requirements of IDA? It doesn't do any of those things. So I implore you as a Gen Ed teacher of CC classes, as a mom with kids in CC classes, and as a concerned community member, please create an agenda item to discuss a policy on size and ratio of CC classes. And please include CC teachers and Gen Ed teachers in CC classes to this conversation. And then I just wanted to throw in there that my husband, under teachers' health trust, was also denied his life-sustaining insulin. And when I wrote to teachers' health trust, they replied and told me all the ways he had not been denied. And then one week later, we received the paper denial letter. So we had to go to CVS, and now every week he has to go get his insulin on a week-by-week basis, and it's this big drama. So there you go. Thank you so much. Now every week he has to go get his insulin on a week-by-week.
For the record, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Jara. So I missed a couple points earlier tonight. But INDEE spent quite a bit of resources working with Knowledge Works earlier this year. And we had about a three-month period of some really extensive meetings with them kind of discussing SBL, student-based learning, and what does the portrait of a graduate look like? Because the state is acknowledging that not every person at the time they graduate high school is of the same ability and how kids, most of the time, by the time they hit middle school, they know what they want to be when they grow up and have made a lot of decisions for themselves already. I believe next week there's a two-day seminar, in-person seminar, to go over the results of all of that work from teacher, they know, community input, plus the state, and then, you know, Knowledge Works is really great. So if you can attend, anybody listening, it's really great to get support because if you go and look at like our state performance plan, you can Google that. When you go through all the different areas of criteria at any given point, so like we have to sit on I don't know how to explain it, like, so like, one section can cover six things in that's one group, and so on and so on, and it's a really long document, I'm sorry. But throughout the document, no matter what group you look at, the parental involvement was only three to four people. Three to four people. I mean, in the entire state community, like, listen, it doesn't take rocket scientists to participate in these things. They're very kind. They're very open. They want you to participate. But I also know that when we were prioritizing goals of the student-based learning, I was relentless in not allowing them to push the timetable to implement it further down the road than like today. And everyone in those meetings, because I kept showing up saying no, and I kept moving back. Priority, priority. Because if we can't get to student-based learning, we are gonna be here in twenty years looking at the same test results with the same proficiency levels. So I just wanted to point that out. Ten seconds. Reorg@ccsd.net is a nightmare. I've been poking around on it since it was brought out. Whoever writes the minutes at Mac Middle School is amazing. That needs to train people to write minutes.
Thank you, Anna. Hannah, Hannah Comro. Diana Batista. Camille Bywans.
Hannah Comro, for the record. I never plan on speaking at these meetings, but time and time again, as a board and as a district, you show how little we care about support staff. Their pay is a joke. You took away the seniority, and they have a difficult job that nobody wants. So my question is, what are you doing that is going to help keep them? Why should they stay in our district? I used to be an SBTAs, and as it was stated earlier, it's not an easy job. It is the reason we do not have enough of them to fill all of our positions. As a self-contained pre-K teacher, I could tell you that without my SBTAs, I wouldn't be able to do my job. Unlike some of our trustees, I do not have any faith that this is going to work out for the better. I see our district becoming more and more understaffed because they are not valued the way that they need to be. If you care about the students you claim you care so much about, you would vote differently to show that you also care about the backbone of our district, which is our support staff. Also, I'm not really sure why we keep thanking trustees for being patient with public comment. That's your job. If they're being thanked for listening to me, I'd like to be thanked for having to listen to some of your comments and questions. That last agenda item was painful to listen to. I'm pretty sure the same motion was stated three different ways before it was passed. But really, you should be constantly thanking your students who now have to wait hours to speak for three minutes. Also, teachers' health trust does suck. I actually don't even use it because I have a full-time other job, but I should complain about it more for my colleagues. But I had an appointment last month, and they tried to charge you Mars my primary, and it was gonna cost me over three hundred dollars. Luckily, I work another forty-hour job, and it only cost me ten dollars. So that's how much teachers' health trust sucks. And also, since I have the time, I'd like to point out that it's really annoying and unprofessional that this evening the president was calling out other trustees during their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Diana Batista.
Diana Batista, for the record. Thankfully, you've had a few minutes to allow me to calm down, to not blast you all about everything that I listened tonight during that agenda item. So I want to make it very clear, it wasn't clear to certain people up here, but what she was advocating for was for funding for special ed to ensure that you could give the services and supports that our students need. It wasn't about accountability, but certainly that would help, and you would think if you weren't wanting to be accountable, that you weren't that funny to ensure that you're not in the place of being held accountable. I don't know why that is so difficult or why we have to sit here and argue and fight for that stuff. I'm a little bit shocked that some of us didn't even push that through. You sit here, and it's sped parent after sped parent after sped parent and our sped children sitting here, and they're begging for support and help so that they can be, one, employed when they are adults and now homeless on the street, because I have three... because I have three specialized kids. I have a senior. I, that is the conversation that I have with him every day. You can go and get educated, and guess what? You may still have somebody who what doesn't want to hire you because you don't have the social skills. You don't have the training. You don't have the ability to get yourself to work independently. These are the conversations that I have with my kids every single day. If it's not that, then I'm in IP meetings every single day. And your staff, Melody Thompson, by the way, this last week, running one of my parents in a meeting, saying it's all about how much money you want to spend litigating against us parents. It's all about, guess what? Those are not the 아이의 조는 going to rule in your favor, because let me tell you something, parents are not. I don't know what meeting she's been in, let me tell you something, they're not, and they're under my, my watch. So I don't know what the heck is going on. You would think that you would want the money. You guys love the money so much. It's all notes being taken down when we're sitting here talking about money. It is incredible because our children, I say on a daily basis, and there isn't a day that I don't want to put advocacy. And you want to know why? Because I know that I can sit here and write a minute plan. There's likelihood, guess what? There's gonna be nobody ensuring that that child gets a minute when I leave that IP meeting. There are supports and services that our children need, and they're begging for help. I don't understand why it is that I have to play here and get your point extremely young. It is crazy. Thank you for passing it, but like, it shouldn't come to this. And I'm sitting here and I'm calling you over and over and over again. I will help you. That employee that couldn't get a job? I'm willing to help her. Let me go in there and observe and see what I can do and talk to her. These are our accommodations that we can get, that by the way, you're liable to still give her ADA accommodations at work. I don't know if you know that. So it wasn't about the liability of a federal law. You are already liable. I don't even understand why your attorneys aren't discussing this and ensuring that you're informed about that.
Camila Bywaters.
Nobody knows what they're doing.
Camila Bywaters, President of the Las Vegas Alliance of Black-Swol Educators, Coach of Education for the National Action Network Las Vegas chapter. I don't even know where to start, because a lot of the public comment that we heard was really off the chain. What is really going on in the principal and administrative meetings? Are we having conversations about supervision on campuses? We do understand that we have a teacher shortage. We have shortages all across the district. But this is not the kind that, um, Levaxi has gotten a complaint about supervision. We've had a complaint about supervision at Western. There was a whole fight that happened on campus, and no one even intervened in a timely fashion per the video that we saw. And this parent that came up here talked about his son with a disability. No supervision in the bathroom? That is unacceptable. There has to be some type of conversation that are going on in these principal-admin meetings that are tightening some of these things up. That is absolutely unacceptable that we have to hear from parents about their children being in vulnerable situations. So again, our craze for the district is fire, rehire, raise. That's the precedent that, um, the last gentleman said that was, um, um, established here. That is true. There are so many individuals within our district. A lot of black teachers who have been fired did not get an opportunity to be rehired and definitely didn't get an opportunity to get a raise. This district has already shown today its part, it's, um, um, their partiality over. Came in here, I came in here late, and someone, uh, uh, the community member was given an opportunity to speak without following the so-called protocol. So then when I asked, hey, let me come up and speak and be a special preference, I was sold, oh, well, Camila, you know the process. Well, yeah, on my, I didn't get to say it, but I'm gonna say it now. Well, you know the policy as well. That partiality is what we continue to show in this district. You pick and choose who you're gonna serve, when you're gonna serve them. You pick and choose. It is very dehumanizing to run the district in that way. And then you have the audacity to read the policy on public comment, read a whole policy, and the students have to wait till the end of the meeting whenever special, um, special treatment given to a community member who came in late. So heck, yeah. Heck, yeah. Give me my opportunity to speak as well. Please, if you give one opportunity to speak, it should be two. If you gave me, it should be three. So we've shown how this district operates. You're not following your policy, and it depends on who you are in order to get things done in this district. But I really wanted to say also, um, we need academic support center in the eight-nine-one-four-eight, um, area.
Thank you, Ms. Bywaters. Moving on to this item six-point-oh-one. Upcoming meeting of the Board of Trustees Thursday on October twenty-seventh at five P M. For good answer. Carla. Carla, Carla with a K, Carla. Allow us one moment to double-check our records. Thank you. Carla, it's a good call you. Come on, good. Come on, Andy.
Good evening. My name is Carla Severson. Good evening. I need to know how to do this properly. Vice Chairman, thank you. Vice President, thank you. And Superintendent Jara, the Board of Trustees. My name is Carla Severson. I am with Heart of Parent. I'm also, um, a Children's Ministry Director and also helped open up our TCMI Academy, our micro-school. Um, I wanted to actually point out in the four-point-oh-four, um, in the agenda. Um, I was really all for everything with the mental health, and, uh, there'll be a pass, but I, I really had a hard time with the sex education for, um, opt, opt-out versus opt-in. Um, parents have consistently asked for eight years to really be kept in the loop when it comes to sex education. As a matter of fact, since two thousand fifteen, parents have flooded these board meetings to make this right. And in two thousand seventeen, uh, the governor vetoed a statewide, um, sex ed bill because it removed the express permission for parents to choose, um, sex ed. So with a ninety-five percent rate of permission slips, and that's, um, data from the ACLU in previous years led by Todd, um, Todd Story, he was here. Um, there's really not an issue in participation in sex ed. So I don't know why there's such an issue in having to put that in there to vote, um, to be, um, opt-out versus opt-in when parents are, there's a ninety-five percent rate of return. Um, we just actually, um, had an event with, um, empowered conversations with parent and teachers, uh, just this past Tuesday with some CCSE teachers and, and charter school teachers. And a lot of them did mention the lack of support, um, the health, uh, the trust health. And also at the mi- micro-school, uh, we opened it up and, uh, during twenty-twenty. And I, I worked one-on-one with a lot of kids, and a lot of them did have IEPs. And I had to really, you know, work a lot with them one-on-one to, to really get them back academically, obviously with the pandemic and everything that really held them back. Um, so I do feel for, I am, uh, as much as I am a homeschooler, I've done charter. Um, I'm pro-public school. I'm not anti-public school, but I do feel like the teachers, I pray that you do hear them and feel their hearts and what they need, um, so that they can move forward. Because teachers truly, as also our Children's Ministry, um, Director and also as a teacher, it is a thankless job sometimes, and you're there, you're, you know, with the kids and because you love them, and a lot of these teachers have that amazing heart, and I do hope that you, um, all listen to them and, and, and what their needs are because, especially with the special needs kids, which whom I love very much and I get to work with on one-on-one basis. Um, so please do listen to them, and I, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. We'll go back to item six-point-oh-one, upcoming meeting of the Board of Trustees. It's gonna be held on October twenty-seventh at five P M here in the boardroom. Trustees, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Trustee Cabasus. Would like to make a motion to adjourn, uh, Madam Vice President. Thank you. You see trustee Ford in the queue.
I happily second that.
Thank you. We have a motion by trustee Cabasus, a second, and trustee Ford. Trustees, please. Pastor Bellin. Trustee. Bye. Trustees, that motion passes six-two-zero. Voting, trustee Kuzma is not present. Wishing everyone a wonderful night. Thank you.